Good morning, half a day. The Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens now convenes this oversight hearing on the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. Hearing notices were given to the media, a first notice on Tuesday, January twenty eighth, and second notice on Wednesday, February fifth, twenty fourteen, and February twen- ten, twenty fourteen. For the record, today is Wednesday, February twelve, twenty fourteen, and the time now is nine oh three a.m. Later on today, the committee will also convene a public hearing on Resolution three one six, and that hearing will be at two thirty p.m. Before we begin, I'd like to start by acknowledging the presence of our Vice Speaker, P.J. Cruz. Senator Alina Maschita, thank you very much for joining me this morning, and also to the Administrator and the management of the Guam Memorial Hospital. And I see also we have staff from the hospital who are here, wanna thank you for being here, taking your time off to be here. I'm, I noticed that you have a PowerPoint presentation you want to start with, right? But we have also, I believe, members from the public who are here, and I like the signs you guys brought in, you know, the signs you guys brought in. So if there's any, before we move on, I'd like to ask if there's any members of the public, any employee, any, or anyone that wishes to testify? If you'd like, you can come up here and sign in, and I'd like to, to start with you first, if you'd like to testify. Is there anyone that wishes to testify? None? Okay. If there's none, then we'll go ahead and go. And I wanna thank the hospital for providing documents that were sent to our office Monday afternoon. This was in response to a letter that we sent in, fourteen points that we sent in, and so we received that, I wanna thank Joe for sending that. I know it was a compilation probably of different departments that put things together, and so, that's right. So we, we're, all the senators have a copy of it, and so we're looking at that. I gotta admit that it's a lot of information, and so we're going to ensure that we, you know, we go through that. But, you know, understanding the criticalness of all the information that we've asked, and being that the last time we got together here was, you know, maybe sometime early last year, you know, what I'd like to do is perhaps, at this time, not waste anyone's time. I know we got good people here who are here, who's taken, who's taken leave to be here, and so what I'd like to do is perhaps concentrate on a few items that we have, and then from there, come back if we have to for another hearing. And at that time, and that's why I ask if there's any members of the staff, the managers that wish to testify, to do so now, because we don't wanna take your time away from the hospital, okay? And so, one of the, and so this PowerPoint, I thank you for it too. We'll accept it, we'll take it, and we'll have the senators, we'll make sure that we review it, and if there's any question, we'll make sure that we have those questions ready for the next hearing, okay? So some of the things that have popped out in the submission are, of course, the finances, right? The finances of the hospital. And so, that's something I'd like to go over, as well as the computerization. We, the last time we had a hearing, there was a go-live date that was set for April twenty thirteen, and so we see now that that hasn't happened. And we've talked about how it's very important to get that equipment, to get the equipment and software up to par, so that we can start running the hospital more efficiently. There was subsidy that was provided by the legislature, from the legislature through the Vice Speaker, and so, you know, we wanna get an update on that, so if anyone here in the panel wishes to explain where we're at with the-
Senator, thank you very much. I just, do I get a chance to make a brief opening statement?
Sure, sure, please.
Okay. Thank you. And good morning, Senator Rodriguez, and Vice Speaker Cruz, distinguished senators of the legislature. I thank you for the opportunity for us to come here today, and the opportunity to allow us to share with you the progress, successes, accomplishments, and challenges of G M H, and I appreciate your support and your willingness to listen to our concerns and ideas about improving the hospital. And I know you have a set agenda, and we will respond to your agenda items forthwith. I just wanna say a few brief things. I enjoy talking about the hospital. As you know, the hospital is a very complex environment, and I enjoy sharing the successes as well as the challenges that we face. We always have to remember that within all the challenges G M H deals with every day, the hospital is comprised of very dedicated, hardworking people and professionals, and that work hard every day to relieve the comfort and suffering of the people we care for, and patient safety and quality of care is always our first concern, and we work hard to address that. We've made progress, yes. We've made improvements, yes. Do we have more to do and to overcome, yes. I'm sure we'll be discussing many of those challenges here today. G M H is steadily moving down the right track, and I will, you know, we will talk about some of those successes as well as some of those challenges. I just wanted to also highlight briefly that the management has been very prudent and responsible with finance, very limited financial resources provided by the government of Guam. I really wanna thank you also for your support. You're all aware of our recent loan proceeds that have come to fruition, and I'm sure we'll be talking a little bit about that today. I won't go over again, for the sake of time, some of the other highlights that I've had prepared about, you know, there's, I'm sure you're reading this morning an article about many, several RFPs that are out there, which I'm sure we'll be talking to, we'll be talking about this morning. But many of the changes that we're making for the long-term financial health and patient care of the hospital are challenging, but we can't do it alone, and to accomplish our goals and objectives, we all have to work together, and we're looking forward to working with you to continue to support our direction and efforts, and we thank for your support. So in briefly closing, I just wanna thank you once again, and as I said, I know that you have your set agenda and set questions. Your first question had to do with computerization, and you, Senator, and you mentioned that hadn't happened yet, and that's incorrect. We are about, we have received all the computers that Senator Cruz has allocated. We are about ninety-six percent complete in the allocation of the hardware. In fact, I'd like to call my Director of I.T. up to give you a full accounting and status of what that is. So Vince, if you would come up, please.
If you can just state your name for the record, please, and your position.
Well, it's a good morning. My name is Vince Kichichu. I'm the hospital's Information Technology Administrator. Kind of sort of where we're at with computerization in general. First of all, thank you to the legislature for appropriating one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to help the hospital purchase computer equipment, computer terminals in general, to help us use for the end users with our new electronic health record system. That was funded through the twenty thirteen budget appropriation through the general fund, I guess, and we were able to award that to two vendors in mid-two thousand thirteen. We received all the equipment in October, and we've installed up to ninety-six percent of the equipment throughout the hospital, and that includes terminals for physicians to use, mostly in the clinical areas, ancillary areas, and the operations side of the house. Additionally, the hospital purchased new computer equipment for the new E D, E R expansion, and the new C C U, I C U expansion. Those equipment were funded through General Obligation Bond, two thousand nine, if I recall, and those have all been installed except for the remaining Phase Two portion of the E R. Equipment is in place for physicians as well as the clinicians to use in those areas. We additionally ordered or purchased equipment to upgrade the network, the connectivity of the hospital's network, the backbone. That was funded through Compact Impact Funding. We also had equipment purchased and installed for the Fiscal Services Department. That includes registration, medical records, the business office, and accounting. We're about sixty percent completed in installing those equipment. And there's more to come. We're still, we're working on, with these installations on a day-by-day basis with the staff that we have. And the E R, E R implementation, which was supposed to take effect last year, in early April, was put on hold for several reasons. Leadership at the time felt that we should put it on hold to help clean up some of the processes, clean up the problems of the charge master, having a charge master review, possible duplications in the master patient index, medical record numbers, et cetera. Additionally, that we needed to clean up some of the A R and other issues so that we can start fresh and clean in a new E H R upgrade system, and that was one of the primary reasons why it was put on hold last year.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the plan was put on hold, the electronic health records then moving forward, right?
Right.
Wasn't there a deadline also that had to be met in order for the hospital to be able to get this Medicaid incentive pay?
Yes, for the first year Medicaid-
And did we, and did we receive it?
Yes, for the first year Medicaid incentive pay, we had to attest to meaningful use. Fortunately for us, the first year was an A I U attestation. A I U is pretty much evidence to show that the hospital has invested in an upgraded E H R system, and has implementation plans, and work has begun to implement it. So that was actually completed in January thirtieth. Our CFO, Mr. Allred, was able to fill out the information needed, CMS, E H R incentive website, and get our registration number to then apply with the state Medicaid Office, Public Health. We're actually scheduled for them to come up to the hospital this Friday for an audit of our A I U. That's the first year. Alin, do you wanna add anything?
Good morning, Senator. Thank you. I just wanna add a couple things to what Vincent said. It took, Vincent, Patty Camacho from our business office, started back in early two thousand thirteen, the process, to get a test to for meaningful use, and it took five months of effort from Patty and myself to actually get the authorization from CMS, and then we were, once we got the authorization, we were able to submit the information that in this. Vincent, that was submitted on January thirtieth. We will be visited by Public Health tomorrow, and once they confirm the data that we have submitted, they have forty-five days for the funds to flow from Washington, D.C., through Public Health to us, and we're looking at saving over a million dollars, a million for meaningful use in the first year. I do wanna come back to a couple things that Vincent told, to capitalization, and once again, Vice Speaker Cruz, thank you for the one hundred and twenty-five thousand in your legislation that provided it to us. Also, Vince mentioned forty-three thousand that we used for other upgrades to hardware. In the fiscal two thousand fourteen budget, Vince has budgeted one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for additional user devices, and we will be using the proceeds of meaningful use to buy additional hardware to ensure that all nursing stations and people who need to have access to electronic hardware have that. Also, as part of this whole software program that we have to upgrade, Vince and his team have to purchase an additional server for one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We had initially scheduled it for last year, and we put that on hold, and now, just two days ago, I signed the requisition, but in order to proceed with the upgrade of the software, which is scheduled for the revenue cycle in July, we need to get that new server, so we are moving forward with that requisition, and now to pay for that software. I believe it's all sourced, I mean, through N T T data for that I B M server. So we have two things, we need one hundred and sixty thousand and one hundred and fifty-five thousand, which we'll use, which we will use the funds from meaningful use for that.
Okay. And, go ahead, before I-
On, you have the hardware in. How many?
Uh, ninety-six percent.
How many of the personnel are trained to be able to do the input?
Most of the personnel that's using the current system are trained in the current IMed system. This upgrade to the E H R is actually an upgrade to the IMed system, so it has the same look, feel, and functionality, but it has more of the additional features. Initially, last year, or prior to March of two thousand thirteen, we had training, ongoing training for about six months with the implementation team and several of the end users from the clinical side, nursing physicians, for the IMed, the E Mar, and we didn't really start on the C P O E side of it, but also for pharmacy. Yes, I'm sorry, C P O E is the Clinical Physician Order Entry.
Yeah, I remember the letter from the previous General Manager, Administrator, Mr. Vega, where he talked about three hundred and some thousand was used for this training, and it was supposed to go hot on a certain date. Is that, the training that was conducted in twenty-
Eleven.
Eleven. I can't even remember the year now. It started, twenty twelve.
It actually started in early two thousand twelve.
And is that, is that the training that is necessary for the equipment that's being put in now, and will, or is there need to upgrade the training that is conducted? I mean, I know there's-
Yeah, that-
At least with my phone and my iPad, there's almost every other month, there's an upgrade, and you have to learn a whole new thing. I mean, is there-
Yes, although the training was done back then, we're scheduling refresher training and training for those new employees that have never been trained on the system.
And how much time, it's gonna be between now, okay.
I should add that, N T T data, once we had finalized the payment of them and settled our relation, financial relationship with them, have open communications with Joe and with Vince, and we know that we need to schedule implementation, which would include not only the training or retraining, but also preparation for the new software pieces.
Okay. And Senator Maschita has a question, and, you know, before we continue, I just want to make everyone understand here, right? Is that this is not an effort of this committee to micromanage or to do the day-to-day, I think, but if you, if you look at what needs to be done, we need to know, we need, and people need to be held accountable, because I saw the information that was provided to us as well, that there are future funding that is gonna be needed to get the system up to hundred percent to work, and so we wanna make sure that, you know, things are being done as they're saying they're being done, and that, you know, we know exactly what is needed. So if you, if you could, after Senator Maschita asked her question, explain to us too, what are the future needs? Because I did see, in, you know, just looking through it, that there's additional resources that need, that you need, and we know that you're already operating in a very tight situation, right? So can you please explain that as well? Senator?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for being here. Mr. Kichichu, perhaps with ninety-six percent of the hardware already installed and the training that has been going on for at least a couple of years, when do we expect the electronic health records to actually be in place, to actually start and happen?
Scheduling a go-live for July of this year for the R C M and the clinical side of this E H R system. There are some requirements, as, you know, mentioned by Chairman, we do need to acquire, as I mentioned by R C M, we do need to acquire servers for the clinical side of this upgrade between now and then. We just submitted the requisition, it was approved by our CFO yesterday, in fact, or two days ago, so that procurement, we're hoping it's gonna take three to four weeks, if not longer, or shorter, then we can install that to get the clinical portion of this upgrade installed and start getting folks trained on it.
That's great. We hope everything, well, I hope everything works out.
Thank you.
Will the electronic health record kick in every time a baby is born? When a baby is born, will her or his electronic health records start?
Yes, the E H R system is, it's throughout the clinical side of the hospital, including the O B, L N D, and nursery wards.
That's wonderful. That is so wonderful. Thank you so very much for that. You're working collaboratively with Public Health Social Services?
That's correct.
That's wonderful.
We actually provide them and C O G seeders with monthly transmission of newborn hearing data.
The hearings, the hearings, yeah. And I know Linda DeNorsy at the Southern, maybe she's at the Northern too, maybe she's everywhere, but Linda DeNorsy, I know, is doing electronic health records at the Southern Clinic. I just, I really appreciate that. That sounds wonderful, and I hope everything, I hope when July comes, every baby that leaves, every baby that's born is also born with an electronic health record. That will really help families. And so as the Vice Speaker is talking about training, I'm glad to see that that's embedded in your in-service. Have you made effort to talk to our nursing program at U O G to have that, or maybe it's already being taught in their curriculum, electronic health records, is it?
Actually, when the students, the nursing students come into the hospital for their clinical practicum, they're already provided training on the current system, so any refresher training or additional training would just be within their orientation whenever they come into clinical. Once they become nurses, it's that much easier for them to slide right into-
Huge progress, great. I look forward to July two thousand fourteen, when you tell us it's all up and running and, you know, it's going. Thank you.
If I may, Senators, understand that these great, great late plans often are complex and oftentimes encounter issues that require adjustments, so these are our current plans, and we're currently moving to proceed on that current timeline, but, you know, understanding that things often happen, so, I mean, as of July one, that's our ideal date, but understanding that, you know, adjustments often occur, so we will be happy to keep you apprised of progress.
So in cases like this, where, you know, we understand, because dates have always been moving, and so we understand, you know, you explained why it was, it was put on hold and why there's a delay, but what, what do you anticipate would delay this? Is it perhaps funding to get, to acquire the software that you need? If you know you're gonna acquire this, this is part of your budget already now, do you have the funds able to do this?
There are actually two parts to your question.
Can you answer my-
It's on me. There are actually two parts, two answers to your question. First of all, we have budgeted in fiscal two thousand fourteen the cost for paying for the software, and also with the training costs, travel costs that are associated with the people coming here. With the release of meaningful use funds of over a million and a half dollars, that will go a long, long way towards paying the forty thousand dollars a month that we will pay, we are paying to N T T data for the E H R software. So the meaningful use is going to come at a very opportune time to last, pay for the capital, and also for the lease cost. Relative to what could impede the conversion, I mean, it's a very complicated conversion. In order to make this happen, Vince used the initial R C M, it's the Revenue Cycle Management System, which is the backbone of the whole billing, medical record number, encounter number, all of that has to be converted first before we can go to the new release of E H R. So Revenue Cycle is going to have to focus on the conversion over the next four months, and then the clinical side will be sequential to that. So it's a, it's just, you know, it's very complex when we deal with everything from, Vince mentioned, the charge master through fees, through setting up new processes to take advantage of it. Vince also pointed out in N T T data, you know, they were, they made presentations, they made training in two thousand twelve. Well, since then, N T T has considered, continued to increase or add new releases similar to what you mentioned, and so, in essence, we have to go from where they were to where they are right now, and that's part of the whole training, and then we have to be able to modify our training and processes to take advantage of the software as it exists right now. So that's part of our plan.
Thank you. Senator Morrison, or Senator Maschita, have a follow-up?
Um, the training part, with that whole training plan, so I heard they come from off-island, is that correct? So is there a component in that training plan to provide a training of trainers to build local capacity, so that we don't, okay, thank you, because obviously you know the value of having immediate onsite, always-
Yes, for each of the, for each of the clinical suite of applications and R C M, we have implementation teams, these folks are like the super-users, and will be trained to be trainers. We actually have an IMed training team that we've had for the last five years, comprised of nurses, ancillary, medical records, and I T professionals, and these folks are the ones that are, and medical staff that provide training to end users, refresher training, new users coming in, like new employees and new physicians, and that's scheduled with our office as needed and as required.
That's awesome. I thank you. And then one last question to this whole training package, sir, is are we including stakeholders in any of these training opportunities so that the cultural competency piece for our families, in when we, when we help them understand they have an electronic record, and we help them understand the value and what this needs, are we at that point yet where there's an option, and we say, come, or help us better understand, how to help you better understand and access and use?
We have been providing physicians or providers with access to the system and training to the system, and they can actually access it from their clinics, and we will offer more to the stakeholders as the system gets fully implemented.
Thank you.
To include training.
Thank you. I appreciate it much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kichichu, I appreciate the questions being answered. I have a quick question. I know the Chairman brought up some concerns, or if there's additional funding that we need, or I T to address more I T infrastructure needs, so I think you'll be answering that on, but how many I T folks are in your department?
Yes, we have a total of ten. Out of the ten, there are five computer operators, one operations supervisor, myself, two systems, senior systems person, one technician, and it's been like that for the past six years now. I'm sorry. We did have eleven a year ago, but one of them has left the organization, and that's still a vacant position.
Has there been an assessment done to how much I T staff you might need for any potential opportunities that you foresee for the hospital?
Yes, yes, in fact, I've been working collaboratively with our H R department and our A A O, and we've actually identified rightsizing the department to properly support all these new technologies that we're putting in place. Once we go live with this full-blown E H R system, we're definitely gonna need some, either more training, certification training, as well as probably one or two more professionals to help with maintaining and supporting these systems.
Okay, so, has that been already kind of projected in your potential staffing patterns in the-
Yes, in fact, we're submitting our two thousand fifteen budget shortly, so that, I'm including that in our submission.
Great, great.
With a justification.
Great, thanks. I, one last question, Mr. Chair. I've been working closely with the recently created Office of Technology and the Chief Technology Officer there, and of course, we've been addressing some of the protocols that need to be put in place to address critical data throughout our executive line agencies. What is your approach to protocols as far as protecting critical data?
I'm very keen to ensuring that we have to protect critical data. At the hospital, for the last eight years, we've been, we've implemented a system called High Availability, where our production servers are mirrored to a backup server. In addition, we back up both of these systems every night during graveyard shift, so we have backups to the backups. I'm actually a proponent of doing that, government of Guam White, I've suggested it to the former Bit Chief C I O when he was here, and now with Mr. Minabuson, the D O A. I think we should have high availability or redundancy for all the production servers in government of Guam, in the hospital as well, so that these data and critical information as well as the application- Uh, so that these data and, and critical information, as well as the applications that they're using, are always backed up and available so that if the production system fails, it's as easy as switching over to your redundant system.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
I'd like to add one thing to what Vince said. Uh, first of all, uh, he mentioned in his remarks that a hundred thousand dollars was used from Compact Impact Funds last March to build a redundant network. Basically, not only do you have one infrastructure for getting data, having it flow through the hospital, but we created a backup also. And so because we re, we are reliant on our electronic health record, we cannot afford to have it fail. So not only are we talking about backups of the data, but we have a backup system and network that's being managed by IT that will allow them to ensure that the system's always available for vendors. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more other questions regarding this topic?
If not, I'll just, I'll close with these two. Um, the last two questions on this topic. One of it is, we just paid off the NTT, um, um, debt that we had, right? How are we not gonna get back to that situation?
Thank you, Senator. Again, I have two answers. First of all, the meaningful use funds of a million dollars, maybe as much as one and a half million dollars will be, uh, used focused on IT, electronic health records. So whether that's for the software, for the maintenance, or for the staffing that, uh, Vince is talking about, you'll be presenting to me, we will use those funds judiciously towards that. And so, uh, once again, meaningful use attestation and actually as a five-year program, I, I don't count, estimate what my actual, my, the hospital's receipts are going to be, but we anticipate that we'll be adequate to ensure the funding, uh, for paying NTT and other vendors, whether it's for, uh, Cerner, for lab system, or for our, uh, labor delivery optical system. I mean, we have a lot of software that's all flows through Vince's department. Relative to the, the financial status of, of the hospital that's in PowerPoint, we can address that later. But we do have funds for IT.
Okay, and so I, I, I understand, uh, the meaningful use money, if we get it, that's how we're gonna use it. So we really can't deviate from the timeframe we're setting because there's a, there's a deadline on when we must, um, go live. We must have the system up and running, uh, before getting that money. Am I correct on that? So, and, and what is the drop dead deadline for that? Because we, and, and I don't think it was answered earlier. We missed the first, um, the first opportunity to receive money, right?
Since, yeah. Since the hospital has attested through AIU this past January, uh, that's for the first year attestation. We have, uh, two more years remaining, actually. So for the second year, we need to provide ninety days of reporting, uh, meaningful use of an EHR system. So, uh, our July timeframe to go live has given us enough window to get ninety days of reports or data to report back for attestation for those ninety day requirements for year two Medicaid incentive. Uh, and then the third year requires a whole three hundred and sixty-five days of reporting. Okay.
So Senator, you're, the drop dead data, if, it, we, we have a few months wiggle time. So I guess the drop dead date would be, we need to be live by October because we need that last three months, ninety days worth of data in the EHR for the remainder of this year. So we have a little wriggle room, but not much.
I may have missed it, but I thought one of you testified that you need a hundred and sixty for a server and a hundred and ninety for something else. Uh, is that, are, are those funds budgeted for and, and do you have them on hand to be able to purchase them before July? Or is there a need, I mean, I don't want to find again that I, we need to have an appropriation from here because we got everything else in except for the-
Those funds, by speaker, were included in the fiscal two thousand fourteen budget. They were there. Now, as far as the availability of funds, um, we do not have three hundred thousand dollars in our bank right now for IT. And that, and that's where I mentioned that I've spent five months of my time trying to get CMS to register us, to allow us to attest. Now, as, as from talking to Test Archangel, uh, at Public Health, she has said that once they do attest, it should be forty-five days. So we are anticipating the receipt of, uh, the money from first year attestation shortly. Once again, they'll be at the hospital on Friday to, to review our data and our submission.
What happens if they don't attest to the, the program that you put together so far?
Well, then we will have to look at cash flows and work out a payment plan. Uh, you know, the, the most important thing that I mentioned and Vince mentioned is a server for a hundred fifty-five thousand. And we'll have to find ways to pay for that from operations.
And wouldn't it be prudent to make that the priority purchase? You got twenty-five million the other day. In order to be able to get a million, if you invest the hundred and fifty-five now and maybe, you know, somebody didn't get paid a hundred and fifty-five, but you got the million in, in forty-five days, you could then pay that hundred and fifty-five. But if you pay the hundred and fifty-five to a vendor now and you don't buy this, this hardware, I mean, this server, you're gonna lose out on a million. I, I'm just trying to figure out why that's not the absolutely first thing that you need to, to invest in so that you assure yourself that the million is forthcoming.
Well, first of all, uh, the million dollars from the attestation is unrelated to the payment of the server. Basically, all we have to say is we have a contract with NTT data and that allows us to receive the first year of money from meaningful use, unrelated to the server. Now, for year two, which is called stage one of meaningful use, we have to have ninety days. So to get the funding for year two, which I forget what percentage it is, seventy-five percent of the first year, um, we have to be operational for, for ninety days. But, um, once again, the million dollars is unrelated to, it is not dependent on us having the server. Second thing I, I want to mention relative to the twenty-five million, and I want to thank the governor for his two million dollar commitment of Compact Impact and also to the legislature for, uh, allowing us to increase our debt from, uh, the twelve billion to the twenty-five billion. We did receive the funds. And as Joe mentioned in his press release on Monday, uh, we are looking at payments to vendors. When we structured the loan with the Bank of Guam, we did arrange for line of credit that not all twenty-five million dollars is given to us right away. So we are looking at vendor payments in order to say, what are the needs of the hospital? Whether that's a hundred fifty thousand for a server or whatever. But we are looking, Joe and I are meeting, uh, tomorrow to talk about what vendor payments, what are the cash flow requirements. So know that the full twenty-five million is not going to be, uh, or the ten point seven million dollars that's left is not going to be spent immediately.
The only reason why I keep asking that question is because we've been down this road before. When I got that three-page letter from Ray Vega that I gave you guys when you first came in about how great all this three hundred thousand was spent on this training and another three hundred thousand for this training and we were gonna go live in August and we were gonna go live in October of twenty eleven, and it didn't happen? Because we didn't have a hundred and twenty-five computers? I'm just asking, is there something that we need to know now so that we can help or do you have this under control?
Well, of course, by speaker, you can help. And that's the substance of our con, my presentation today relative to the funding for the hospital. This is much broader than just IT. It's, it's the funding that is needed to support the hospital, whether it's for IT or for clinical services. But, uh, I will, you know, recognizing Senator Rodriguez opening comments, I, I won't discuss that. But certainly we need to have IT funds. We need to have funds for, uh, the clinical operations in order to, to operationalize this.
Just relative to the, uh, public health attestation, uh, I, I will look at everybody and cautiously say that I do not, we don't think we anticipate any issues in, in, in attesting to our, uh, uh, you know, attesting to our plan, uh, tomorrow. So we're, we're pretty confident at this point that there will pretty much, you know, pretty much stamp what we've done and, and that will proceed. Um, we don't anticipate at this time any major obstacles, Senator.
I can add, the attestation is, is very, um, Jaja relevant. And, and I was supported by the University of Hawaii, who is under contract with Public Health also in order to help other providers on the island attest also. And I know that many primary care doctors have already received funding through the Medicaid program. The, they have received a copy of our contract with NTT and they are only now having to verify discharge information. The way GMH receives money under meaningful use is we get two hundred dollars, I believe, per discharge. And so all they have to do is verify our information. So, um, with that, I think Friday morning's meeting should be fairly straightforward relative to the accuracy of the data or clarification of the data. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Duenis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and this is just a quick follow-up. I, I know that you, we worked very closely together during the budget process. And when we start to hear budget issues and cost issues, when it's associated with investments that you can make immediately to yield, um, you know, return of funds, uh, we, that's one of the reasons why we were so aggressive on, uh, first of all, your budget and, and revising it. Second was the, uh, transfer authority of the governor. So we just, I think the committee just wants to put it on the record that, uh, instead of going through these days and days and thirty days and forty-five and ninety days when the investment can be made, I, I think we're just trying to put you on the record, Mr. Ulrich, that you, any investment opportunity that you see that would yield you return, uh, that you'd move immediately requesting the governor after you, especially since, um, you know, you have to, um, uh, pay off a lot of debt as, as you're moving forward. But I think that's what we're trying to get to and can we get that insurance?
Well, of course, you have the assurance that, uh, we will be judiciously using the twenty-five million dollars and making sure we have the funds available. I also want to thank the legislature for the appropriations in fiscal two thousand fourteen. In the PowerPoint presentation that we have, we will talk about, uh, several areas that are affecting fiscal health for GMH, namely, uh, reimbursement by Medicaid, reimbursement by MIT, coverage for self-paid patients. We're draining the resources of the hospital.
Right.
And while we, we do appreciate the, the ten million dollars, uh, that, or twelve million dollars that was appropriated from Gov Guam, we've only received three point eight million dollars and that was received in, in September to help cover the shortfall of funds, uh, that came from the garnishment and the, and the, uh, lack of funds for Medicaid and MIT. So, uh, even with the, the ten million dollars that are remaining, uh, what we're talking about is a multimillion dollar need of the hospital in order to, to meet its, its mission of providing care for people in Guam. It's very, very difficult, ladies and gentlemen, to operate a hospital with one day's cash on hand. And that's the situation that we're in. I don't, I do not have extra dollars to pay a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars for a server, a hundred sixty thousand dollars for, for hardware that's needed. Uh, so, I mean, we, I'd like to have the conversation with you at the next turn. Thank you.
Sir, just before we go on, I, I do need to clarify. I'm hearing a lot about this twenty-five million. I want to be clear, we do not have twenty-five million dollars. Okay? We received our loan, uh, we received the proceeds. Out of those proceeds, ten point five is going to pay off the old debt. Okay? And four point three of that is going to be used to pay off Perry Point. And, and of that, the remaining proceeds, ten point seven will be left to pay off the debt, which is not enough to cover the entire debt. So I wanted to be clear, this is not a windfall. None of the, these funds are going towards salaries and wages or, uh, you know, capital improvements. They're strictly going to pay debt. But Senator Duenis, your point well taken. And, and Senator Cruz, your point well taken. That if we had or we see an opportunity to redirect some of those funds to, to an area that would yield, let's say, an immediate benefit via an investment or return via a million dollars, we certainly would do so and then seek to replace those funds. So if that's the, you know, the answer you were looking for, yes.
I, I think we're all sensitive to the fact that you have these funds obligated. You've spent enough time coming down to us and doing what you needed to do to let the public know you needed that money to take care of all of your outstanding obligations. The simple point is with fifteen percent transfer authority, any identification of an opportunity to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to yield a million dollars, I think the committee just wants to hear that you would do that and make that phone call or write that letter saying, "Governor, if I have through your transfer authority a hundred and fifty thousand dollars tomorrow, in three weeks, we can yield a million dollars." That just makes sense and we wanted to hear that the fiscal team was on that.
And, and we certainly agree. And you have-
Thank you very much. Thank you. Senator Ogden?
Just a couple of following questions. First of all, thank you very much for that clarification on the allocation of the twenty-five million dollars because it's part of your overall presentation. And, and the information, just leaning quickly through some of the information that you're providing in the slides is certainly very informative in terms of getting a good update of the financial situation of GMH at this moment. I do, I found it kind of interesting, there's, uh, additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars that, that has been allocated for additional hardware, a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars for the server. And I do know that the vice speaker just momentarily ago, or just a moment ago, uh, had requested if in fact there's any additional assistance necessary from the legislature. Then I heard that, uh, statement was made that you don't anticipate any ma- major challenges at this time. And, uh, that's possibly reflective of the fourteen million dollar relief from the, the loan proceeds that you just recently had. And I say that because obviously from ninety million dollar obligation, outstanding debts to, to maybe down to four or five, that, that provides just a very little cushion for, for, uh, I guess, short-term relief. I guess my question is, if you have an additional hundred and eighty-six plus units of computers, you're working on transitioning that so that in fact all of these computers are, are installed and connected to the server, they're ready for use by July, your personnel are gonna be trained hopefully by that particular timeframe and then subsequent to that. And then looking at the overall replacement, I guess my question would be, with all of your existing computers that you are utilizing today, what are your plans in terms of redistributing that or just shutting them down completely? Because those could be some additional resources. Or are you gonna continue to utilize them and upgrade them so that in fact it would be hundred and eighty-six plus additional computers, plus the existing inventory of computers that your, the entire hospital facility is gonna be utilizing? So if, if you can just outline what your plans are for that.
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll let Vince follow up and, and more of the plans. But, um, realize that, uh, we have more additional space, you know, clinical space now with, with the new ICU and the new ER, um, e- especially, um, we were, the, the hospital was already, wi- without the, the, the great addition of these computers, senators, the hospital was already pretty short. And I think you guys recog, you folks recognized that and, and allocated that money. So we, we're, we're kind of playing catch-up a little bit, but, uh, the existing computers, uh, some of them will be redistributed. Uh, some of them will be upgraded. I'll let Vince again speak more to the exact plan. But we were in the process of playing catch-up. And now, especially with the new additional ICU, CCU and ED, uh, the new EDs, um, is about right now, um, sixty-five percent complete. You know, we're only operating in about half of the new ED right now. And the other half is under renovation and is about twenty-five percent complete. That will also require a further redistribution. And I believe we have some computers reserved for allocation to those areas. And I'll, I'll let Vince talk further about our, our plans there, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. V.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator, for the question. Um, yes, so in addition to the hundred and eighty-six, uh, computers funded through the hundred twenty-five K, uh, we actually installed, uh, or acquired forty-two more for the ER CCU expansion and, uh, forty-five more for the Fiscal Services Department, totaling two hundred and seventy-three new computer equipment. Some of those new computer equipments, as we deploy them, are replacing those computers, some computers that are beyond life cycle usage, you know, three to five years and they're slower than slow. Uh, so we've been replacing them. We've been augmenting, adding more, uh, these new computers to those areas that are short, that they need more workstations or computer terminals. Additionally, in our twen, current twenty-fourteen budget, we have up to a hundred and sixty thousand, uh, approved in our budget, approved in the twenty-fourteen budget, to acquire additional computer terminals this fiscal year to again augment the, the shortfalls that we do have shortfalls after installing all of these new equipment.
If I may, Mr. Kitcher, that's already been cleared in terms of the allocation and the procurement of those additional hardware?
Yes. About a hundred sixty thousand dollars is over and above the hundred twenty-five thousand-
Correct.
And the forty-three thousand.
I'm just inquiring whether in fact it's already been pre-committed through the procurement process- process and that you're procuring the additional hardware or computers? Or are you still, you still have that as part of your budgeted amount and it has yet to be committed or expended? The hundred and sixty thousand?
It hasn't been extended yet and, you know, until we actually were able to attest with the Medicaid program, we did not have, we could not count on that million dollars coming in. And certainly now that we have, uh, a broader assurance that those funds are available, then we should be able to go out and expend that hundred and sixty thousand. But, but Vince and I worked very closely together on the forty-three thousand, I call it the ripple effect, that if somebody gets a new computer, their old computer might, if it's, if it's salvageable or usable, beefed up, repaired, brought up to speed and then, so it's, it's not like we're just getting all new, we, we've moved it down. For those who don't need the supercomputing, we've given out the lesser level of fuel, an older version to somebody else. And so Vince has been very active in doing that.
I guess one of the reasons why, and I'll just go through this statement, Mr. Chairman, one of the reasons why I inquired is, is obviously you have, uh, an excellent procurement process in terms of having procured up to two hundred and seventy-three additional computers be, above and beyond what you presently have. Now, that being the case, if you have a hundred and fifty in inventory today or two months ago and now you have an additional two seventy-three, you may be able to relieve yourselves of some of those computers. And the end, the final comment I would like to make is obviously those computers could be utilized elsewhere in our public, uh, in our government system, so to speak, whether it be through public education or in other areas where the need may arise. But I don't want to take away from any opportunity for GMH to continue to utilize some of those assets. So, through upgrading it and, and ensuring that you're able to, to allow the continued use of those particular computers, but an additional two seventy-three based on your previous inventory, I'm sure you may be able to release a few so that in fact our public school students could positively benefit from that, but I just wanted to, just to.
Yes, and any, anything, any, wow, I guess it's making a statement when GMH has to, I guess, supply other areas of, of, of the government, but, um, uh, I, I, anything that we can absolutely is salvageable and usable and we don't need will go back to GSA. And then the GSA would be available through the government services, uh, area for further redistribution, so.
Obviously, if, if, uh, Mr. Kitchell highlights that the lifespan of some of these computers are forty-five years and some of the computers in my office alone are probably twelve years old, only that because we've been able to maintain them and, and obvi- obviously upgrade them when necessary. So, I mean, that may be the situation here, where computers that, that would otherwise be sitting in storage could be sitting in storage in front of a student or in, in other government entities. But, I, I just say that because obviously this, this is a, an overall, uh, view of computer technology requirements and as we continue to, to provide additional services to, or there's our students in school, our public school students or whatever, or other government agencies, they may be able to avail themselves and benefit from some of the assets that you have. Okay, so that's, that's just my final statement, so just a suggestion. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So as we move on to the, the financing issue now, um, the final question for Vince or for Alan is the software you have now for, um, for the financial side of the house, you know, when you post your AR, the transparency report, um, on- online, um, I know one of the, one of the issues we've always had is that when you post it up there, um, like right now, the receivables is about, um, two hundred and forty million, I believe, but then we always get this, um, um, you know, counter, this rebuttal from insurers, saying, "Well, that's not the true numbers that are on there." You know, is the software, um, you know, why? First of all, why? You know, you know, why is it not being reconciled or is it being reconciled now? You know, and, and number two is, um, i- isn't there a software that would allow for, um, for these things to be straightened out?
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. That, that is a very complex question. Um, first of all, let me mention, yes, we have two hundred and forty million dollars. One of the slides, uh, in the package that you have talks about how I take two hundred and forty million dollars until it's actually collectible. I have, I have bad debt that's included for a hundred and twelve million, I have sixty-two million of self-pay, I do not have contractual allowances taken out. Most software systems will only record the gross receivable, the two hundred and forty million. Now, that doesn't mean that, as Vince said, we put this off, the conversion offer, you asked for it to be delayed because we were not ready. I did not want to take, I'll use the word, old receivables garbage and take it from an old system, from something from twelve years ago and populate a new software system. So that's why I delayed, we have to clean up the receivables. Uh, and that's one of the things I'm working on with, uh, patient affairs staff. But we are recording our receivables at gross and we have a, a, a reserve for all of our receivables and our financials that take it down to net collectible. And, and one of the slides that, uh, is in there talks about the communications that we have, whether it's with Medicaid and MIP or with the local insurers relative to reconciliation. Uh, and, and, you know, I, we're in continuous communication with the insurers, uh, it's a, a very complex thing to say, "Well, this is a valid receivable, this isn't, this should be patient care, it shouldn't be receivable from the insurer." And so we have staff that constantly work to try and clean that up.
So what's the net collectible from that two forty?
This here. If you look at page twenty-five of the contractuals, this talks about the reserves. This is a, a copy of a document that I'm working with Deloitte, who are, are external auditors and also working with OPA on our audit of the financials. This is as of September thirtieth. If you look at the far right column, um, in the lower right, you show that two hundred and thirty-four million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, two eighty-six are our gross receivables. We have reserves, whether it's for things that should be written off, contractual allowance, et cetera, bad debt of two hundred and eleven million dollars, leaving twenty-two million dollars actually receivable. So it's really, when you, when you look at the presentation of accounts receivable, yes, I show two hundred and thirty-four million, but the two hundred and thirty-four million is, is a, uh, a grossly, uh, inflated number that's not realistic of what's actual co- collectible. If I have receivables from Medicare for thirteen million, I'm only going to net seven million. Medicaid, I show twenty-two million, I might only earn eight million. It's part of this ongoing conversation. In fact, uh, back in September, I initiated, as I shared with you, the first conversation with public health to reconcile GMH's receivables with public health. They had never discussed public health, we show you, oh, and it's this, public health saying, "We don't have that." So that type of reconciliation has to be ongoing between, uh, the hospital and public health and with the insurers.
So I, I guess, so, you, you told us to turn to page twenty-five, so what is the, um, you know, taking into consideration of what you just said? What would then be the, um, the net collectible and what you can actually go on and collect for from that two forty?
You know, I have ninety-three thousand encounters that are not considered bad debt right now, ninety-three thousand lines of encounters, visits, claims for ED and patient. Based on my estimate, and once again, I'm working with Deloitte to make sure it's an accurate number or reasonable, I'm saying that twenty-two million is what I'm net receivable target. Now, once again, when I look at receivables, I know there was discussion back in October, November as to what is receivable, we always have patients in the hospital incurring charges and until that person's discharged and until we get the medical record completed and coded, we don't bill for it. So there's always going to be, there will always be receivables that the insurance company doesn't know about, but what we have on our books, so that's part of the difference.
Senator, if I may, uh, one of the things you heard was, I think I mentioned this last time out, one of the things that GMH never did was reconcile, uh, receivables and from billables to receivables, not only from Medicaid and, and the three Ms., but for the insurers. And, you know, when we came in, we, we started for the first time ever reconciling these bills and I guess Alan can tell you what a mountain of, 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 of information and, and, and work this is to, to begin reconciling it. But that is an essential, you know, basic accounting process that needs to happen. We're playing catch-up still and, and from the years of never reconciling these things and, and to the point where once we're, we're current, of course, it needs to occur on an ongoing basis, but this is one of the, the improvements that we've made in fiscal operations is that this never occurred before. We are doing it now, but it, but it, but it hadn't in the past.
So, 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 so with, so with the reconciliation that's, that's happening now, um, what is the, you know, what are you collecting now versus what was being collected in the past when these things weren't happening, when these rec- you know?
Well, first of all, let me clarify Joe's comments. There were settlements, there were ongoing conversations with the four local insurers, uh, met public health and Medicaid. Medicaid, I'm sorry, it's on. Public health, which represented in our books thirty million dollars of receivables when I initiated the process, had never had that conversation for both Medicaid and MIP. But we have had those discussions, we have had settlements with the four local insurers. Uh, you know, uh, as we've talked to the insurers, to their operations executives and also to their claim staff, we are constantly saying, "What's with this receivable?" And they're saying, "Well, we paid this, with, this should be patient share, et cetera." So it's part of the ongoing, the conversations that we have. And so, I'm sorry, just want to clarify, your question again, Senator, please?
No, so, um, based on now you, you, you're doing, you're doing this reconciling with the, with Medicaid, right, and MIP, um, that it hasn't been happening in the past, is what Joe was saying. So what is the, um, the net result of this? You know, what are we collecting now versus what we've collected in twenty thirteen or in twenty twelve, twenty, twenty eleven? What is the, um, you know, where's the improvement?
Well, that's, that's very hard to quantify. Um, you know, once again, because it's the first time ever I have a database of two hundred and twenty-five thousand lines of receivables from public health and that's matching against their payments. So we had the dialogue in September and unfortunately due to other commitments we've been not been able to revisit it, but it's a very complex, uh, reconciliation that has to go forward. Relative to collections, I think, uh, when I look at the, the Medicaid and the local insurers, the goal is for us to get a clean claim out the door and get them reimbursed in accordance with their contracts. And, and so, once again, you really can't look at the percentages per se or, or the dollars because it depends on how many patients we're here and what types of services they have, they receive that family.
Mr. Ulrich, you on, um, your, uh, your website, you have revenue and taxation garnishment, seventy million, collection agency, forty-two million. How much of that or are, is any of that amount included in the amounts that are owed by self-pay, the Medicaid and, um, and the, uh, insurance? Is that a double entry?
No. That, that's a very good question, Vice Speaker. It, and that's one of the things that prompted me last February, working with Joe, to say, "We need better efforts for collections." And in March of last year, I actually started the process to write the RFP for a collection agency. And here we are, let's say, eleven months later and we're just at the process for actually getting a quote from a collection agency. So it's been a very laborious eleven months to get to where we are today. I have a hundred and seventy-five million dollars due from self-pay. DRT, yes, seventy-two million dollars. No collection efforts have been done on that since those accounts went to DRT. Absolutely nothing was done, expecting for income taxes to pay for that. That's wrong. The collection agencies are working, but we also have sixty-two million, as I mentioned, in our, in our self-pay as of, uh, January twenty-ninth, that a lot of that has to go to a collection agency too. So it's not double, it's, it's actually what we owe by the self-paid uninsured, uh, freely associated states, all of those funds that have not been collected or have not been paid, that are sent to GMH.
On the amounts that are owed to Medicaid and Medicare and to the insurance companies, will the implementation of this electronic health record, electronic billing obviate a lot of those disputes?
The electronic health record?
The electronic billing system and what, will that obviate a? I understand that some of the, the complaints that some of these have are, um, there's improper documentation, can't read the writing, whatever, whatever it is. Will this electronic billing system obviate those, those kinds of complaints and will we be, we be reducing the amount of challengeable, um, and questioned billings, uh, as a result of the implement, I mean, the act, starting up of this, uh, digitizing system?
Well, the, the clinical physician order entry will hopefully lead to accurate, uh, entry of charges. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, you, I heard you comment, uh, handwritten charts. We're in a hybrid right now, we have a, uh, handwritten chart, paper chart, and part of it's computerized. And, uh, you know, I, I mentioned in one of my slides there that forty percent of our emergency department claims have errors. No wonder the insurers are asking for copies of our electronic records if we have forty percent error rate, which is unacceptable. It's still, whether the software has the capabilities, I have to work with Vince and his team on that and with NTT. But nonetheless, we have to make sure that the processes are tight, that charges are audited accurately in order to ensure a clean claim goes out so the insurers don't have to review every transaction.
At, at our last hearing, there was question, or there was a comment made by a member of the community, that part of the problem is that the GMH's, uh, billing people don't have the proper training for coding and that they need to, to have some, some very specialized training. I'm wondering, since that last public hearing, has a- anybody been sent or undertaken to take, get some training in proper billing code or coding, whatever that, that's called? I mean, because I get notices at least once a week from, from medical training center that wants me to learn how to, to code and I'm just wondering, has anybody taken, getting the same emails I'm getting? I keep wondering how I get, I'm getting them, but are you guys, are you guys getting it?
We, we do have an opportunity if you'd like to apply.
Senator, if you're interested.
I, I, I may.
But let, let me answer, we're talking about apples and oranges. Apples are the billing of the charges for the services that we have at the hospital. Uh, Vince mentioned that we delayed it because of a charge master. We're finalizing a contract with a, a, a multi-year contract with the company to make sure that we are billing and we have actual, accurate information for every line item, every procedure, service that we offer. The business office people are reliant on the entry of charges to make sure the clean, the claim is clean before it's submitted to any insurance company. The coding that you talk about is saying, "I came in for a, a fracture of my leg and it's my right leg, not my left leg." It's, uh, we have fifteen thousand diagnosis codes and it will soon go to sixty thousand diagnosis codes in October first, when we migrate to ICD check. Now, we do not have certified coders in our coding department. We have started last year, last fall in fact, a program for all the four or five coders to actually go through self-assessment, self-training in order to be certified. Nonetheless, uh, to make a transition from fifty thousand to sixty thousand is a very complex transition. It's not only the coders, it's going to be the medical staff who have to say, well, this is the diagnosis. And so the medical staff are going to have to be trained, which is why a week ago we released the RFP for coding and business office. We need to have a company who understands ICD-10 to come in and not only train our coders, but to train our medical staff that we get that specificity of diagnosis to comply with ICD-10.
That was the answer that I was looking for. I was hoping that somewhere along the line, somebody was going to come in and train the staff, whether they were going to go away, do it on their iPad or, you know, online or actually have somebody come in and do the training. Because it seemed to me at the last hearing, at least from that one person that testified, who claims to have billings that are, are virtually unchallenged, that the main problem was that you don't have certified coders. And I'm glad to hear that we're bringing in, or at least we have an RFP out, to, to have somebody come in and train the staff.
Senator, to answer your, I mean theoretically, the EHR should result in, 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 in reduced claims that are challenged, in, in theory. However, typically, you know, where we are now is, and I'm sure we'll be talking about this more, is, you know, at a reimbursement system with the insurance companies where they, you know, they go down every charge, every line item, and, and if there's not document, they're asking for documentation to verify every line item charge, which is why we're trying to move towards kind of one and all-inclusive redeem rate in, in, in new agreements that, that I'm sure we'll talk about. But, but in theory, and this is, again, this is a very complex issue. ICD-10, which is, which will be implemented by, as you heard, October of this year. That's the reason why we, we ended up, you know, flooring the RFP because we need to bring people in with the tech, with the technical knowledge, expertise, and the technology to also assist the hospital, but also train the hospital staff. And, and that is, that is going, that is a complex undertaking. And it's not something that, that's very common, that every, that you could just go out and your mom and pop shop and do.
And in the financial statement that you have online, you have forty-two million owing, owed by the government of Guam. How much was that, I'm sorry? Forty-two? Well, forty-two nine, forty-three, whatever. In your discussions with Public Health and Social Services since last September to reconcile this, has this been reduced any? Is there, are, are we going to be reducing this sometime soon? And what earlier you also mentioned that you had a hundred and twenty in bad debt. Is there a plan to have the, the Board of Trustees by resolution write off some of that so that you don't keep carrying it and, and making it look like you have a quarter of a billion dollars that's coming that's never going to come? And, and, you know, it's, it really is misleading. And just come to final realization, a hundred and sixty of that's never going to happen, that's just...
Well, actually, if you look back to page twenty-five again of the handout, and you look at the second column, which is Medicaid and MIP, now, once again, this is on September thirtieth. We had twenty-three point nine million dollars due for Medicaid and MIP, not counting the government for things from line agencies. We show nine point three million dollars actually going to be collected after contractuals, after corrections of write-offs, et cetera. So let me answer your first question. GMH does have a write-off policy. The Board of Trustees has established authorization for write-offs that include myself, Joe and the Board of Trustees. And yes, we have to take those funds, those receivables off. From my understanding, the pre, my previous predecessors did not want to remove the receivables. But that, that in fact misleads the, or provides misleading information to you because we do not have two hundred and fifty million dollars. As I said, we're down to twenty-three million dollars actually due. So we do have a write-off policy, and I do have to present that information to the board. We are working with Medicaid and MIP. We just have to reopen those conversations as to how much they actually owe us and to get, whether it's Medicaid and MIP or the local insurers, clean up the receivables so they actually show what is receivable and clean. I want to come back to my comment.
In the year that you've been there, have you presented to the board a, a request to write off anything yet?
No.
I, I, I've attended some of the board meetings and I've been here eight years now. And I've attended many board meetings where there has been a presentation by previous CFOs asking for write-offs and, and the board has approved it. So, but you haven't asked for it in the last year since you've been there?
No, I have a, I, I know right now I have a stack of write-off requests that are decided that I just have to process. And that will, once again, have to go to the board. And we do want to clarify, come back to something relative to the coders. GMH has never previously defined a job title for certified coders. And I did put that in the fiscal two thousand fourteen budget. And I am working with Human Resources and with our interim Director of Health Information Management Medical Records to allow the current non-certified coders to become certified. Nonetheless, in this day and age, we need to have certified coders. And, and this should have happened X years ago. ICD-10, many hospitals, on the mainland, started this whole process, what, Joe, two or three years ago? And here we are, eight months before it starts, and we're not ready. And it's a massive education process for physicians, clinicians, clinical staff, and for business office staff to make sure the claims are going up. I'm sure the insurance companies are all getting ready for ICD-10 too.
Yeah, so Joe, on, on the coders, the RFP that you put out, is it to train your existing personnel? Or is it to do the coding?
The RFP is actually to outsource everything from coding. It'll be to educate our physicians and staff about ICD-10. But also it's to actually take, outsource everything.
But would you still need?
And that includes billing and collections of all commercial, commercial including governmental collections. GMH's processes are twenty-five years old. You have very hardworking, very conscientious people, but the processes, the systems are twenty-five years old. It makes it very difficult to go to an electronic world when we're, we're buried in paper. So we are trying with the RFP to say, we cannot make a transition from here to here easily with the processes that we have. And so we're, we are aggressively looking for a vendor who will take everything from coding through collections.
So the existing four or five coders you have will also still be needed when you do outsource this?
We don't know that yet. But, you know, under the terms of GovGuam Human Resources Personnel Policies. And once again, I have twenty-two people in the, in the business office, Patient Affairs, who are also affected by this, if it becomes a reality. And so the question is, what are the services that have to be provided in order to prepare the data for a claim for another company to submit it? So that's all going to be discussed as we go through the RFP process. But for instance, this morning at four-thirty in the morning, I had a conversation with a, an agency on the mainland to say, I need a certified coder, coders, to help get, prep GMH to move forward. And so I'm looking at bringing in interim certified coders to help our, or the coding department at least lift its level here before we even consider going to an independent vendor for the RFP.
Senator, this is a tremendous transition and these are kind of complex questions. But to answer your question, GMH, there are very few hospitals that are paperless. And GMH will not in the near future be entirely paperless, okay?
I don't think anybody's saying they're paper, should be paper, entirely paperless. What I'm saying is, when we had the last hearing and that one person testified about the need for certified coders, I was asking, since that time, have you taken the, made the effort to send one of the five off for certification? So that that person could come back and hopefully help train the other four so that you don't have to outsource this entire thing or send two. But you spent the time writing an RFP to completely outsource it. You don't know if you're going to get somebody, you're getting up at four-thirty in the morning to call, to ask for coders. But we had the hearing four months ago, five months ago. Which, if you had spent the time to send, invested in sending one or two people off, they would be back with certification.
I disagree with you, Vice Speaker. That's not the way it works. Each individual has to go through training, has to take classes and be assessed. And it's an individual that's not trained. I mean, there are quarters on the island and, and, but we did start this process last October, in fact, to say to the medical records, to the coders, you need to be trained. And this is the process I've been discussing with Human Resources, to present the plan for training so that they can get it. Now, they have books, they have access to the website, and they are doing individual training.
I, I'd like to just finish my thought. I was saying that we envision that the answer to your question, Senator, is, is still needing these people because we will not be totally converted to a, to, to a system where we will eliminate the need for the coders that we have to be certified. So the RFP that we wrote is for someone to come in to help transition the hospital, to help train the staff and to put together, to slowly, or to, to put together a transition plan as quickly as possible to convert the entire system and upgrade the one we have. So it's a very, very complex task and, and, and it's, it's an oversimplification to say, it's as easy as sending someone off the island, because it's not. And, and so we, we, we proceeded in the best way, in the most expeditious and responsible, judicious way that we thought possible to, to, to implement the system at GMH.
Thank you. Senator Siniklis?
Thank you, Senator. I just, my ears perked up, Mr. Ulrich, when you mentioned revenue tax collections and how you, so you're saying you have not received any garnishments from them or collection items from revenue tax remitted to GMH?
That was an incorrect interpretation of what I said. We had actually, you know, I believe we received twelve million dollars in two thousand twelve from the first payout of, of refunds from the administration. And as other refunds are issued because of the information that Vince flows to Revenue and Tax every, every so often, they get updated information as far as who's, who owes money. And then if a refund goes, the Sam, the person, and I have a, a one thousand dollar refund and I have a two thousand dollar bill at GMH, then my one thousand dollars is garnished. We do receive garnishments, but nonetheless, I still have seventy-five million, more or less, of receivables still at Revenue and Tax that are dependent, solely dependent on an income tax refund, which might or might not take place whether now or in future years. And that's why, when we talk about the collection agency, my goal is to take that seventy-five million dollars and not only leave it at DRT, but also to give that seventy-five million to a collection agency so that they can be pursuing collections rather than just having to sit at DRT and be considered, quote-unquote, dormant.
So I'm, I'm, I'm going to be having oversight here on revenue tax real soon. And this is a very interesting topic you bring up because of part of the process when somebody doesn't pay their taxes is that revenue tax has the steps to take, whether it's requiring them to sign up for payment plans or for freezing assets, putting levies on assets. And if their inability or their lack of aggressively doing that is also impacting the hospital's inability to pull in this remaining seventy-five million, that's another element of the conversation that I need to bring up. So what you're saying is that there's seventy-five million in receivables with DRT? And if DRT were to actually collect on any of those outstanding taxes, they'd be able to offset that to the amounts necessary to remit to GMH?
Well, you know, it's, it's, not to put a nuance to it. But let's say that I, through my withholding at GMH, I want to make sure I have zero liability due to the government at the end of the year. So even if I have a five thousand dollar bill from GMH, as long as I don't owe anything to GM, to Revenue and Tax, I will never have any refund to receive and therefore I'll never have that five thousand dollars paid through Revenue and Tax. So it's, it's almost like it's just sitting there, waiting for the potential future event that somebody has overpaid their tax liability and there's going to be a refund. But there's no guarantee I'm going to receive, ever receive that seventy-five million the way it's set up right now.
Senator, I'm glad, I'm glad you, you brought up you'll be having an oversight with revenue tax. And you, you can, and, and one of the things I've asked Senator Rodriguez about, and I'd like to ask this, this legislature, part of our debt is to revenue tax, GMH's amount owing. I'm sorry to say, Senator, they're not really on our shortlist for payment at the moment. But that's one of the things that we wanted to bring up to you is, is to look at, to see if there was some way that we can work something out to offset that, that, to either forgive it or to, to clean, we're, we're looking, of course, to clean off our debt at GMH. And that's, I'm not sure exactly how much, but I think Alan has it in the receivables. It might be about four million or something like that.
If you would get four, page four of the handout, it shows the summary of, of the payables.
If you can get that detailed to my office right away so we can take a look at that?
It's actually on page, page five. This is a, you, Senator Rodriguez, you had asked for information of payables by vendor type. And you would concede the government four million dollars. This relates to withholding from two thousand ten and two thousand eleven, which is a liability from GMH to Revenue and Tax. So that's what Joe was mentioning, that we would like to look at a way of, of removing that liability or working out with Revenue and Tax to just eliminate that liability because it's four million that we don't have the funds to pay. And as you can see with the schedule of proposed payments, we don't anticipate paying. We want to take care of our important providers of services and supplies before we pay the government.
That's four million from withholding taxes that wasn't remitted to DRT?
From two thousand ten and two thousand eleven, yes.
What, do you know what happened to that? Because, you know, when you, when you withhold taxes, you're basically taking it from the employee's paycheck. And you're supposed to be holding it in trust to go to revenue tax to pay their refunds when they, when they file for their refunds. So that money's already been withheld from the employee. Where did the money go?
I would like to ask Mr. Infante, who's here, who's our accounting supervisor, because he was here during that time, if that's okay?
Sure.
Good morning, Senators. My name is June Infante. I'm the accounting supervisor at GMH. Anyway, that is just a, the four million is a balance of about twenty, I think fifteen million that we owed. It was in the books for a long time. And subsequently, the government has been giving us money. You remember that when we floated a big bond, the government paid off some of our balance to directly pay revenue and, I mean, directly paid some, also, we got, we've got some payment, also paid for our retirement at the time. So that we owed retirement and we owed income tax at this, at the time. And when we got some money from that, from that floating of the bond, we paid off some balance. And that four million is just the balance left. But you're right, it's withholding at the time. And the employees were not impacted because they still got their, they were able to file their income tax. There was some work being done to, to forgive the interest on that one. With Revenue and Tax, there were some talks happening already with the former administrator. I, I think the forgiveness did not happen at the time. It's something that we can pursue. And I believe the Director of Revenue and Tax has all the information too on that one, on, on that project.
Um, yeah, are, are we still not, are, are we not, are we fully funding the withholding right now as of now?
Right now, we are, we are remitting retirement and income tax today, except, except we have some issues, the same as the other government agencies. We, we tried to fund it one hundred percent, but it, it, there's a, there's a timing delay. But we are not late, late in remitting the payments. But we are not late, late in remitting the payments.
Because I know that with retirement fund, they charge interest when you remit late.
Correct.
And also with, um, the Internal Revenue Code, when your withholding taxes are past a certain date, you get charged interest.
Uh, uh, penalties for failure to file and pa, failure to deposit.
Are we, are, is the hospital incurring any of those penalties right now?
No, not, not right now. Not currently.
Okay. Okay. I'll work with you guys on the, um, on the withholding issue. It gets a little complicated because we're talking about the federal revenue code, you know, that we're mirroring. But we'll, we'll try and see what we can do. But, you know, I just wanted to kind of talk about that. Because when you're withholding income from people's paychecks, you know, I mean, there's things that they can do to reduce their withholding, to actually have more net pay. And if they had done that, they would have, they would have had more net pay and they would have gotten, you know, whatever refunds were outstanding. So, um, I'm glad to hear that we're not doing that anymore. I would seriously discourage that.
We, we are current. This administration is current. But I will tell you, Senator, even if you, and I've gone through this with our, our, our payroll, uh, department. Um, i- i- it's funny because i- i- based on the amount of deductibles or, or dependents that you claim, um, and I've gone through this iteration with, with the folks in payroll. Um, from, from someone who claims two deductions to someone who claims ten, do you know what the average difference of coming out of your pay would be? Less than a hundred dollars. And I find that to be quite, uh, amazing, especially if we're, we're mirroring, uh, the federal, uh, system. Um, but, but I've gone through this with our payroll department and just, just to say, so if I wanted to, okay, I've met my tax obligation to Gov Guam. Now, here I am in October, and I want to reduce the amount coming out of my pay now. Um, so, so how can we, I, uh, how can I adjust that? Well, can I increase the amount of deductions or can I, um, uh, just say I'm going to pay a fixed amount? And, and I've gone through this, and, um, the system that, that's in place doesn't seem to lend itself to do that. And so, I, I would, I would suggest that maybe just you clarify that with revenue tax. Um, so from somebody that claims two deductions to somebody that goes to twelve, if you just look at that schedule, you will see less than a hundred dollar difference coming out of your pay. I think that's quite, you know, startling.
We are current, so. And, and, you know, it's a, it's a, um, mandatory thing from my standpoint that we pay all withholdings and all contributions to the retirement fund, um, that are due. And also to people who have deductions, whether it's for a, uh, credit union or whatever. So, we, we do make sure that those are.
Okay. Senator Siniklis, did you have any?
Uh, I do have with respect to the presentation, so I can withhold that, Mr. Chairman, or?
Okay. And so, um, so just moving on, Alan, so what is the, what was the budget that was passed for, um, for FY twenty fourteen?
One hundred forty-three million.
One forty-three, but there's modifications, right? Because I remember that included the, the, um, loan, the debt, and so that's, uh, so is there, has there been any modifications?
We are actually, um, I'm working on that with Joe as, as we speak. Um, there are actually many things that have happened in the last ten months. First of all, we significantly underestimated the cost of the merit and increments. We had put two million dollars in the budgets, actually going to be over three point six million dollars. Um, that is a, and that doesn't include, once the salary freeze is gone, the three and a half percent that are paid in increments to people when they reach their anniversary date. Uh, we will reduce the, uh, debt payment from twenty million down to, probably down to, uh, ten million, I'm thinking. But that has to be based on the analysis that's, uh, in here on page five. But the, the third thing, though, and there's, this has been, uh, a recent event, is what is the cost of the HAY study? And I want to comment that, uh, GMH has not been mentioned in, in the press. But we have presented, uh, DOA and, uh, DOA and, and to Mr. Berga, the projected cost of that, which is going to be close to between five and a half and six million dollars, including the retirement fund.
And so?
That's, and that's, now, if we take half of that as of February, but once again, that, let's say that's three million dollars, whatever that number is, it was not included in our budget.
Sure.
And second of all, there are no funds to pay for that.
So, what has, um, DOA, the administration, um, advised you on, on their plans? Because that was one of the areas that we have, we wanted to ensure. The GMH is also part of this, um, this HAY plan. And so, we were assured at that time that, um, funds would be transmitted. So, you said now that you did, uh, transmit what these numbers are, what your requirements are?
Yes, I do have a, uh, I did send, uh, the, uh, Excel spreadsheet to, uh, members of, uh, to Vinita at, uh, DOA.
Yeah, no, um, you didn't ask for that, Senator, but I'd be happy to provide, we'd be happy to provide you folks, uh, with the detail. Um, I, I've been, I haven't received any, um, we haven't received any actual word or commitment to date. But, but, but I do want to be very clear, um, you know, and I hear, we're hearing, of course, our employees are asking us about the HAY money, and, and unless we receive any new funding to, to absolutely implement this, we cannot afford to implement this. And we did not write this in the budget, and, and, and we just can't afford it from our cash flow. So, but, but I haven't received any word, one way or another, about, I, I was, I, I understood that there was to be funding to come to GMH, uh, for, to support this, uh, the implementation. But I haven't received any actual commitment, nor have we received any actual funds that have, that have been allocated, so here's.
Just to break it down so it's more understandable, what, what, what is this requirement going to be every pay period? What additional, um, amount is needed?
Okay, I'm going to do some math and.
Just sort of, uh, uh, missed a minute.
Let's say, uh, two hundred thousand dollars per pay period.
Okay, and?
Now, and, and let me just, and that's, and then, one of the things that we talked about from a mandate that I want to mention also, is that for every dollar of salary, we are paying thirty percent to the retirement fund. And that's a unfunded mandate of eight million dollars to the hospital. Because, for instance, I have a five percent corporate contribution, but I'm, the hospital has to pay thirty percent to fund that. And that's, that adds up to eight million dollars. Coming back to your question, though, is that, let's say it's two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred twenty thousand dollars more, more per payroll. The cost of the merit and increment alone, increment, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per payroll, which were not budgeted, nor do we have appropriations to cover that. So, right there, the total of that's three hundred seventy-five thousand every two weeks. This is a major cost to the hospital that we do not have funding because of, as you know, our, our financial state and, uh, uh, you know, the cash collections that we have, which are, uh, too low for Medicaid, MIP, and also Medicare.
Okay. Vice Speaker, go ahead. Do you have a?
The five point five that you said for the HAY.
Yes.
Um, if I understand correctly, the governor's proposal, the nurses are supposed to be getting a hundred percent of their increase almost immediately. And the rest of the employees under the general pay plan are getting fifty percent. Have you broken down this fifty-five, I mean, five point five million as to how much is going to be needed for nurses and how much for the rest of the staff?
I have it broken down by, uh, job title, so I could provide that information for you. It's, uh, we have eleven hundred, twelve hundred and ninety people who are, who's, for whom I've calculated the impact of the HAY program. So, I have each employee and their job title, and I can break that and split and cut and dice it any way you want, but I do have that.
Yeah, I, I think, more importantly, I, the, the nurses were supposed to get, and so you could section out the nurses and then the general pay plan for the rest of them. Uh, but, and then you pointed out that you, you budgeted two point two million for increases, increment. But actually you need three point seven, so you're, you're short seven million.
Actually, that's a, that's, that's, we budgeted two million to get caught up. Following the executive order from last May where we had to pay merit and increment, we did, we did bring everyone to their current level as of July seventeenth last year. The cost of just bringing people up to July seventeenth was three point six million dollars. Going forward, because everybody's pay went up two steps or whatever that was, that's another hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, uh, another three and a half million dollars per year. So, we, we really should, let's actually call it five and a half million dollars for going forward, but also playing catch up.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may just clarify also, on, on page twenty-seven, you have a list of a hundred and seventy-eight vacancies. Are those also, assuming those are a hundred percent filled, are those also included in your five point five HAY?
Yes, to be, and not all of them would be eligible. There are physicians in that too. But, uh, uh, you know, when Joe and I, uh, this is one of your requests for the vacancies, it's on a staffing pattern. So, yes, we, when I calculated the five point eight, five point eight million for the HAY study, I did quantify what the cost would be if I did hire those people during the balance year. So, I can also say, well, here's the nurses, here's everyone else, here's the vacancy, and then we could, we could, uh, provide that type of information.
So, Alan, that two hundred thousand that you mentioned, is that a phase-in amount?
Well, once again, I, you know, I'm working with, uh, Liz Claros, our Human Resources Manager, to understand the HAY study. Uh, she, she knows it from working with it back in two thousand ten. I really don't know implementation plan. If nurses are a hundred percent, everyone else is fifty percent, I, I don't know.
So, that two hundred thousand, you don't know where.
Is all at once, or, or once again, when it becomes fully implemented, then it's two hundred thousand.
Okay, so we, we need that right away because, um, the plan is, um, supposed to be happening. Um, what is it, this week? Tomorrow? And so, we need to, um, we need to know, we need to make sure that, um, people are held accountable. Because we, you know, we were told that Guam Memorial Hospital is going to be part of the plan. And, and that's one of the concerns we had. That's one of the things that we addressed as well in, in legislation that was passed.
And, and certainly, we, we want to implement the plan, and our employees deserve it. However, we, we, we wanted to, uh, give you a status report, and, and our employees are asking, and, and, but at this time, we do not have any funding to implement said plan. Um, so, we'll be happy to provide you with the, with the, uh, with, with the detail, um, that we had submitted to, uh.
Okay, okay. So, where are, um?
I think just on the HAY plan, if, if I may, uh, just to follow Vice Speaker Cruz's request, please, if, if it's going to be consistent with the executive branch's implementation, it would have to reflect nurses at a hundred percent commencing February fourteenth. Everyone else, the general HAY plan will be reflected at fifty percent with the subsequent fifty percent. The original timeline was August. But, but what's kind of interesting is I saw a press release a few days back that said it's going to commence at the beginning of next fiscal year. So, there needs to be clarity on, on that timeline. But I, I believe your five point five million dollar annualized expense should be significantly reduced, uh, considering the implementation plan. So, a hundred percent for all nurses and professionals, uh, for all the general classified employees. And unclassified employees, obviously, would be fifty percent. And then that's the figure that we would need, rather than just try to, try to apply a hundred percent over.
Senator, I have to admit, we've seen, we've heard several, I've seen several iterations of this plan. And, uh, um, the current, I, I think currently stands, um, uh, we, we're still kind of, uh, just left, trying to wonder.
We understand, because even Ms. Ulrich had highlighted about the additional thirty percent, uh, cost structure that has to go to the retirement fund. And, and mind you, that additional thirty percent should be reflective of defined benefit employees. So, I would think that perhaps fifty percent of your employees to date now are under the defined contribution rather than defined benefit plan. Because the defined contribution plan, the percentage is much, much less than.
But once again, under the, uh, retirement contribution to, uh, the retirement fund, whether I'm in the defined benefit plan or whether I'm in the defined contribution plan, I have to pay thirty point zero nine percent of gross salaries to fund that. It doesn't make any difference. And that's why I mentioned that it's an eight million dollar unfunded mandate. Because I might have eight hundred employees who are in the defined contribution plan, but I'm still making contributions for them at the full amount because the re, the retirement fund is woefully underfunded.
Is that, is, may I just inquire a little bit more into specifics? Is that because of the outstanding obligation that GMH has with the retirement fund that the percentage for every single employee is thirty percent?
That's defined by, uh, the government.
Okay, okay.
But I, but I do want to.
Thank you very much, Senator.
I just, if I can just clarify, um, relative to HAY study, even if it's phased in, uh, Jim, I believe we have three hundred nurses right now? Three hundred, three hundred fifty out of twelve hundred employees. I don't know what their salary represents for the HAY study. Uh, so, but nonetheless, I can give you that information early this afternoon, uh, to Senator Rodriguez as far as the breakdown. Whether or not it's half fifty percent now and the remaining fifty percent as of October one, it's going to represent five point eight billion dollars additional cost once we get into fiscal two thousand fifteen. So, it's, it's a significant cost, not only for the balance of this year, but going forward.
And let me just say, we recently had a, uh, meeting with, uh, of, uh, the, uh, OPIA, uh, who started our, our audit. And, um, we're, we're, we're current with revenue tax. We're also current with the pension plan. But we had a discussion, uh, our payments are just onerous. I mean, and, and as you heard, Alan, every pay, payday, I, I sign close to four hundred thousand dollars worth of checks that just go to, 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 to the pension plan. And that's, i- if we had even some kind of relief there, that would, that would provide us with an immediate injection of cash flow. Because if, if that liability went down any, any, any percentage, that would be less money we'd have to pay out every payday. And that ha, that's due on the Monday following payday, or we get a five thousand dollar a day penalty.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you. Senator Duenez has some, a question on the HAY, but just before that, Alan, so when was this transmitted to DOA?
I communicated it last Tuesday to, uh, Joe, and, uh, I believe I transmitted it to them on Thursday. I'd also like to get my actual email, but I didn't.
And then you'll give us a copy today. Okay, thank you. Senator Duenez?
Yeah, Mr. Ulrich, you mentioned, uh, your technical staff, support staff, um, has broken down the numbers, correct?
As far as what, for the HAY?
As far as the HAY study.
Uh, yes. I worked with, uh, data from the Human Resources with the staffing pattern as of January thirty-first. And, uh, Human Resources did say, here's the current grade in step now, here's what will be, here's the difference in costs. So, I, I brought the payroll side, and they brought in the step increases, and that's how I came up with that analysis.
And you're also aware that there was an implementation that predates you?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so there was a twenty-ten implementation of this plan for a period of time? So, data should be and should have been readily available, unless GMH at the time simply didn't follow what that mandate was?
I would have to ask, uh, Ms. Claros to respond. I can't comment on that.
Okay, so, I mean, I just, I, for, for clarity, because this is part of the general discussion, whichever way anybody lands on the side of this implementation, uh, it's not new. Uh, there was an implementation and a subsequent executive order which rescinded it. And now a re-im施mentation, this time with a current plan or plans, if you will. Uh, but anywhere you land on that, this is, this is not something that's fallen out of the sky. And it's very, it's very realistic to think that these calculations have been made and could be contained in the seventy-plus million appropriation that this legisla, or seven-plus million appropriation that this legislature made for this purpose in this fiscal year.
A point of clarification, was that, um, was that implemented and then the, the employees received the money and then taken back? Or they just didn't receive the money?
I think with GMH, and that's why we don't want to go down, down, down that road again, is that it was implemented, the government, but not GMH as an autonomous. And so, what we're saying today, this body's saying today, is that if we're going to do it for the government, you got to do it for your brothers at GMH too. And so, that's, I, I think, so.
Sure, and, and, yeah, exactly. And, and, and so, and so what I'm, what I also will say, I'm sure that at the time, and I'm, many of those people are probably in this room, that the calculation was done, whether or not it was implemented and whether or not it was funded. Okay? So, we're, we're all behind that. I'm just trying to say, while we're all here, sitting here, and we have this question in our head, there is a possibility that this calculation has been made and it is included, and it's just a matter of remitting that money, uh, when Valentine's arrives. So, so, so I don't think, I, I don't want, you know, our, our good, uh, folks here and our staff to walk away with the idea thinking that, oh my God, we might not be there because it was represented today that they remitted the information. It, it may be, and we have to find out, quite possibly, it is included in the seven point, uh, one-plus million dollars that we have appropriated for this implementation.
But, well, just in, in wrapping it up, Senator, that's possible. Uh, you heard our calculations, you know, give or take, and, and, you know, we'll have to go back. And we, we endeavor to be accurate, and we take great care to, uh, um, to, to, to get things right. But, you know, going back to tweak it, uh, when I heard the number, it just seemed, the first phase of it seemed to be somewhat on the low side if GMH was going to be included. So, I just wanted to make sure that. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you were all aware of that, to go back and maybe reassess that.
Sure.
And.
And, and it just seems like it wouldn't make sense if you had a plan for a hundred percent into the nurses' pay plan, and fifty percent for the balance, that you haven't done some sort of calculation. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense, if you were going to make that commitment, like to education, to teachers, to everything else that has been done, it wouldn't have made sense to say that this would be the, the, the process for implementation, and not have calculated that dollar figure. So, I, I'm, I'm going to take it on good faith and trust, but verify, but I'm, I'm, I'm sure that this would be the intention of all concerned, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator, so want to move on now to revenue, to new revenue. Has there been any new revenue streams besides the, I believe, the over half a million that you've received already from, from the gaming, gaming tax? What other services has the hospital put into place, in terms of revenue generating?
First of all, we have not received a half a million dollars, and I think Alan has a, a, an update on revenue that we have received to implement urgent care, as you know, we've been working.
Can we hear that, how much it was received, just to verify?
Page thirteen of the PowerPoint, please, page thirteen. We have received, before yesterday, one hundred twenty-three thousand dollars in round numbers. We received July's payment in October, and we received a payment in early January for fifty-seven thousand, but it was just alluded to fourth quarter receipts. Prior to the hearing today, I did receive a call from Benita Manglona, who told me that a check was now available for one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for the urgent care. Now, and we have not picked up that check, but a hundred ninety-five thousand, so total is then, we've received about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars with four receipts through November. Joe has been in communications or asking for information about when we can receive those funds. Now, once again, the receipt of those funds are designated solely for urgent care. Joe convened a committee that included public health, the public and GMH, and we came up with a budget, and that's been presented, both capital and also operating budget. The subsidy which was coming from your legislation that you sponsored is very much appreciated, but the monies that we receive, the hundred twenty-three thousands is just sitting in savings, because we haven't operationalized the urgent care. On the other hand, as going back to your original legislation, forty percent of the gaming tax, which in this case, if I receive three hundred twenty thousand, let's say two hundred fifty thousand dollars, is still sitting at DOA related to the forty percent. We need appropriations through the legislature to release those funds, because your original bill said that they were to come to GMH to support operations. We, we have not received any of that forty percent yet, pending whether it's yourself or other senators presenting that legislation.
Yeah, and, and just to, just to be clear on that, and the intent there was, and that's what we asked earlier, you heard Vice Speaker and others ask earlier, whether, when we talked about computerization, whether a hundred fifty-five thousand, if that investment is going to take us to, to receive a million dollars, you know, these are some options that, that this body has to say, you know, that we can help, if there's, if there's no other way. I mean, you've heard Senator Duenez as well talk about the governor's transfer authority, so he has the means to do it. So, yes, that, that money is there, I believe it's a little bit more than that, but it, it's there, it's available, and, you know, we do intend to, to make that appropriation for the hospital, you know. But without seeing the actual plan for the urgent care, I know it was passed, and I, I heard that there were some revisions that were supposed to be made, we, you know, we don't know. You know, we, we, there's, there's no way for us to determine actually, you know, how it's going to move forward, or what is, you know, what amount is going to be needed, you know, for, for this new service. When I ask for new services, that's one new service that was coming out of this body, is that we, you know, we've, we've heard that the emergency room is, is where we're bleeding, right? So we, we said, okay, we worked with you guys, and see, how can we stop that bleeding? So this new service is, is something that was passed here and approved by your board, I believe, just, just very recently. And so, that's one, are there any other revenue generating services being offered at the hospital, or there's plans? Because if you look at the strategic plan, twenty thirteen strategic plan, this is one of your items that you've, you've indicated, so if you can brief the, the committee on what are these services?
Sure, you know, one of the additional services, and of, you know, of course, we, you know, every plan, you know, if everything goes according to plan, it'd be wonderful, but, you know, ideally, we were looking at a wound care as, as an additional service. We have a wound care team, which is very much needed, but we, we've been in discussions with Dr. Raccoon, and, and, you know, that has taken, you know, a different direction, as you know, we've, we've been kind of updating you there. We've got several, right, right now, we have several new revenue generating RFPs that are out. One has to do with an LTAC development at the SNU, I'll explain further what that's all about. The other has to do with the, with the cafeteria, the operation of the cafeteria, and bringing in revenue, a revenue source from, from a vendor operating that. The other has to do with the outsourcing of paid parking. So, so in terms of additional services, you know, we had planned to look at things like oncology or, or physical medicine. But, you know, given our, you know, our, our, our cash flow situation, and the fact that we're always being prudent and responsible, we really don't have the, the, the funds to kind of outlay any, any, the, the capital for any of those need services. And especially with the new hospital on the horizon, and I understand that you've asked me many times, and I'm sure we'll get into that discussion again, for that, you know, I, I decided to, and I've been in discussion with them, looking at what they plan to open up. And then I've, we've decided to kind of pull back on that, the urgent care is definitely needed, and that came out of this body. But if you notice, even in our strategic plan, that was one of the things that, that we, we, we recognized was a need to alleviate the overcrowding in, in ER. So there are several new revenue generating opportunities that are on the horizon, and, and as I said, I'll explain more about them, you know, if you're interested, you might have read some of them today.
Absolutely, so perhaps in the next hearing, in about two or three weeks, if we can have a concrete plan.
Two or three weeks, or two or three months, Senator, please, you know?
No, I, I think, you know, we, we haven't gone through, we have a lot of stuff, so if we can have a concrete plan, you know, I think that's, that's what the community is, is longing for now. We, we, you know, we've, you know, we like what we read in the paper and see in the news, but I think it's, you know, we need to see concrete plans in terms of, this is the plan, this is what's needed, this is when we're going to do it, right? So at least, because, you know, and you mentioned the new hospital, it's a big concern for us, I know you, you talked about perhaps maybe twenty-five, thirty percent of our good payers going over there. You know, that's, that's a concern I have, I, I'm sure, I don't know if it's a concern for the hospital too, I'm sure it is. But also a concern with the, with the new hospital is that our people from the hospital now are being, are being recruited over there. And so these are things that need to be addressed, and, and see what, you know, what is being done, all right?
And, and as I said, Senator, these, there are concrete, these are, you know, these, the RFP, the LTAC is out there, the cafeteria will be out next week, parking will be out next week. So these are actual concrete things that, that are, that are, that you are seeing, you know, to fruition, and not just, some of them have taken longer than we've anticipated, but we want to make sure we get things right, and not just throw things haphazardly, so.
Just want to add one thing, you know, and Joe's mentioned some of the non-clinical initiatives that we are doing to increase revenues. But, you know, in conversations with medical staff, we are looking at ways that we can improve the utilization of our operating room, or attract, you know, more urology orthopedic services also, to provide the services there that are needed for people in Guam.
Another one, Senator, I'm sorry, you, you're kicking in a, and I have a lot, one, what, another program was a joint replacement program that we're working on. I have, I've been working with, you know, Dr. Cunningham and Dr. Arathelis, but the, you know, on establishing a joint replacement program that we don't have here in Guam. So, so, and we're, we're on the cusp of doing that, so in terms of new services, new revenue, you know, I mean, I can go down some other clinical items, but, but those are ones that, that are taking a little, kind of a little bit longer to fruition. The clinical ones are a little bit more tricky than the non-clinical ones.
Okay, ye- yes, Senator?
Just, just very fast, I don't want to give you more homework, but there was a, there was a, a pretty grand announcement recently on the qualifying certificate and some possible cost avoidances. So I, I would ask you, could you put that on your radar to go through the commitments that were made with regard to the recent issuance of the QC and services to be provided? I think there is some possible indigent, possible other commitments, and that may be a cost avoidance for you, so I think down the road, it, it may be a, a factor.
But I'm not sure, Senator, if that's GMH specific or community specific, and that's one of the things, you know, Senator Nicholas has asked, you know, many times for, for, you know, what impact? And, and, you know, again, we endeavor to be accurate, but, you know, we've been looking, and again, in, in planning for two thousand and fifteen, you know, we anticipate a drop, but how long will that drop occur for? Will it come back up, will it be a permanent drop, you know, these are all things that are really unknown. I mean, basically, that's the reason why you really haven't heard any good guesstimates, I guess, up until now, and that's exactly what it would be, is a guesstimate. You know, I, I've, I've, by my estimates, could say, okay, maybe we'll see a twenty, you know, as much as a twenty-five, you know, will that last, will that come back up? You know, will it, you know, how much of the non, you know, insured patients are going to continue to come this way and the other way? So I think these are very difficult things to predict, and, and based on the services that they're going to offer, some of them are this, are, are the same as what we're offering at GMH. And I, I, you know, you know, spoken to them about trying to avoid competing for both services and staff, because, yes, Senator, we've already lost some staff to GRMC. And, and so, but, but I mean, you know, and that's inevitable, and we expect, you know, expect that to happen, but if we start competing for the same resources, for the same patients, for the same, nobody, you know, that, that's going to be bad for them, bad for us. So we've started that, but, but it's very hard to predict, and that's the reason why, you know, I can give you a number, but I can't be held to its accuracy.
I, I've, I've always said, and this shouldn't be a government thing, but I always said, there should be a working group on this kind of stuff. And, and, and as much as you say it's community based, it, it has the potential, and that's why I think the review is, is important, is, is, it al-, it also depends on would they show up at your doorstep if they were an indigent care patient, and the cost avoidance, again, that's, that's part of the offset. So I, I, I think it's still important to take a look at, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Duenez, Senator Argon has a question, but just staying on this services, I know one program that we've asked for information, and we'll, and we'll discuss that in depth in the, in the next hearing, is the heart program. It's not necessarily, well, at least from what I hear, it's not necessarily a, a revenue generating, but it's a service that is, you know, definitely needed here on island. And so, what, what is the status of that, and, and what are the plans, because as I looked at the, what you submitted, there wasn't any budget for personnel?
No, in fact, we, we, I'll, I'll ask Belle to come up, Belle, why don't you just, if you can come up here, please, and just kind of give the Senator overview, we are proceeding, our, the heart project is continuing. We, so I'll, I'll let Belle give you an overview and, uh, of where it is. So you're, you're absolutely right, it is a very needed service here in the community, because now you cannot get CAS, et cetera, in the community, and GMH is the only place.
I, I do want to clarify something, Senator Rodriguez, you might have received two documents, Belle might have submitted something relative to her information. I gave you in my documents, three-page document, that showed not only the supplies, but also the clinical and the physician services that were budgeted, it's a three-page document that you should have.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm referring to, that the personnel was, was, was zero.
It was handwritten at the bottom, you should have had documents showing.
Okay, we'll, we'll verify that.
Two hundred thousand dollars for personnel that were budgeted.
Okay. Just state your, your name, please?
My name is Belrod, I'm hospital unit supervisor for the special services department. And currently, just to give you a history, Senators, of the heart program, it started in two thousand and five, where in a group of cardiologists and cardiothoracic surgeon led by Dr. Noel Concepcion, came to the island, and initially, we did twenty-five cardiac cath and eight open heart. We tried to do it every year for at least the cardiac cath, the last time we did open heart was in two thousand and twelve. So to date, we have done from two thousand and five, a total of eighty-six open heart surgery, seven hundred seventy-nine cardiac cath, and also four thousand two hundred eighty-four of consults. In two thousand and, two thousand and ten, we have started to introduce what we call the insertion of automatic implantable cardio defibrillator, where it, it will jumpstart the heart, just in case, you know, the heart goes into a funky rhythm. But only Medicare covers it as an outpatient, so we don't do it every year. So, what we want to do is to have this every year, at least, I was thinking of maybe one open heart in a year. Although, you know, I could admit it, it's not a money-making proposition to do it every year, but then it's good for the community. We don't have anybody, you know, who can do open heart here, except for the group. And the group has tremendously donated a lot of supplies, equipment, personnel, it's a big group, you know, when we do open heart. But we try to, at least, since we only have one cardiologist on the island, the other one is just doing outpatient. And so, we have a lot that's waiting for at least coronary angiogram, or what we call cardiac cath. So if we can have it like, you know, every year, at least every quarter, that would help a lot.
So Belle, I've heard that it, it's not a money-making, it's not a money-making service, but you don't lose, is, is there a loss in this, is, is there a loss in this program? I mean, just, just financial wise, because we know the value it is to individuals and families that, you know, can't afford to, to go off island and need to get it here. But is there, you know, in a financial sense, is there a loss in, in this program?
For open heart, I will say yes, for the other services, because when, when, when they're here, we order a lot of services for the heart, so that's not including the other services that, that they order. So I would think it could be a break even if we have one open heart, or, but maybe Ms. O'Rourke can, can say more of that regarding revenue, because I don't see it.
That's right.
I only order supplies.
And so that's, and that's why in hospitals, I, I know. Yeah, but, and so, that's why in hospitals, and, and just working with you guys for several years, I see where there's that medical side, the need, that we know we need it, and then the financial guy comes around, who, who's the bean counter, right? And so that's where that breakdown communication, that's where things sometimes, and Joe, I'm sure you're the referee in these things. And so, and so these, these are the things that we like the public to know through this hearing here, that, you know, that, that there's a balance being made. Services needed, are people needed, the, the financial, you know, you know, you have to be in sync, right?
Additionally, what the department does whenever they're here is, my department, my staff, we're the one who's coding. You know, we're coding, we're, we're entering the bills, you know, for all the services, because from what I was told, they're not familiar with the coding and billing of cardiac cath and also open heart. So what I do is I sit down with them, and then I tell them what the coding is, and give them all the information, all the medical records, all the, the reports that they need to submit to the, to the insurance company. And also, what our department does is, before we do a procedure, we make sure that it's prior off is, is approved by the insurance. So that's how we help out financially, to make sure that we get paid. And then we tell also the, the patient registration, like MIP, they're ten percent, so, you know, this is how you, you will collect. So we give them, if they have an appointment, let's say, for example, like take care, they want prior off for a consult, we make sure that they have prior off, before they go to the clinic. If they don't have prior off, we reschedule it until we get it. For cardiac cath, some insurance will get prior off, so we make sure that it's approved, and we kind of give them a ballpark of how much they will have to pay on top of it. So, I see it, that, you know, it's a mix of, of, we only have like a few self-pay every time we do cardiac cath. And consults, we have tons of, of consults, every time they're here, they see like maybe close to two hundred consults. And we kind of decrease the number of cardiac cath that we do because of, you know, it's not only us who's using the cath lab. So if it's needed, yes, it's needed, and as much as possible, we help out, you know, with the revenue. You know, it's not them that, they do the paperwork for billing, but we supply what they would need.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you very much, Ms. Rada, so Joe, do we have the, the admin's commitment in, in seeing this program succeed?
Oh, absolutely, but as Belle said, you know, I, we, we are proceeding, in fact, Belle's scheduling the, the CAS schedule right now, going forward. The, the problem is, the, the problematic piece is the open heart, which first of all, is very, very costly, and we, we, we lose a significant amount of money. And I'm not saying it's not needed, but again, by time we schedule that, if, if, if someone on the island has a need, you know, from my opinion, you know, they really shouldn't have to wait three and four months for this service either. And, and that is something that we can talk about establishing at GMH as a permanent service, but again, it's, it's somewhat costly, and, and it could be revenue, it, it could be a cost neutral thing if it's run properly. thing if it's run properly. But, but, you know, it is, it is a significant financial drain, especially when all the doctors, the perfusionists, the machines, et cetera, come. So, so the program is definitely continuing, and there's definitely, that's the one piece, the open heart, that we have to sit down and talk about. That, that, that's kind of iffy at the current time, but definitely the cath. I'd like to see caths become a permanent, just an ongoing part, a new service at GMH. And Belle and I have talked about that many times, and that is a potential new service that, that, that we can, I can, I can envision will be a permanent new service at GMH.
Great, thank you. So we'll, we'll get an update on that for the next hearing. Allen or any senator have a question on it?
Maybe I can just comment on being the bean counter.
It's true, though, right?
I appreciate the clinical side and, you know, that the providers bring, and also Belle being very attentive to the coding, making sure the charges are in. Depending on the payer, and whether we're adequately reimbursed by Medicaid, MIP, the insurers, et cetera, defines whether or not we make a margin or not. I mean, and as long as the three M's, Medicare, Medicaid, and MIP are underfunding the hospital, its costs, you know, right now, using examples, you mentioned pacemakers, cost me eight thousand dollars to, to get a pacemaker. If I'm only getting reimbursed at sixty percent of that, I'm out of pocket thirty-two hundred dollars or something like that. I mean, that's the reality of GMH under its current reimbursement. So, yes, it's a valuable service, but we can't, we can't always have loss-making operations. And that's why when we look at Medicaid and changing its reimbursement structure to GMH, working with
What is the progress on that, on?
Well, we have not, we have not introduced any plans to change the state health plan, which is what has to be done.
But, but on Medicare?
Medicare, we have a consultant who's been working with, we went through an RFP. They've been working with us since November in Washington, DC. We're providing them information, but we're looking at getting it re-based. Now, once again-
This fiscal year, because that's, that's a chunk of your-
We'll be retro back to ten-one. We really hope to have a retro.
But, but you're, it's still on track to be rebased this year?
Yes, yes. We, we are in, in, in the furious throes of this with CMS, and basically have had to start the initiative all over again with, you know, our consultant in Washington is helping us. And I am, I am, in fact, our chairman of the board recently is on his way back. It was in Washington for something, something else, and recently met with them. And so we had, we had a conference call. And we are, again, cautiously optimistic that we will be successful. And again, as you heard, Alan-
Is this, is this the same group that's doing the Medicare cost reporting?
No, 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 that's different.
So that's different. Who's doing your cost reporting now, which is due this month, right?
This will be a new, it's a new consultant, which is, that's been part of the problem, is the former consultant was not very well, you know, CMS didn't like the information that this consultant submitted. So we changed consultants this year.
So, so someone's doing it, and we're going to submit ours February twenty-eighth?
That's what I'm doing, that's correct.
Twenty-second, okay.
Yeah, so they're working on it, and I've been in communication last-
Okay, because that's very important as well. Vice Speaker?
We can't control the feds, but what efforts have been made to try to get together with the Guam Public Health and Social Services to do the state plan. I keep asking about that state plan. Where are we with, with getting public health, and you guys just sit down and do the state plan?
Senator, the response to that is I have had several discussions with Director Gillen. Alan has had many discussions with public health plan. And the response that we get, and we, is always that there's, you know, we, we can't modify the plan because there's no funding committed locally. And that's the answer they get. So I'm not sure who, I know, Senator, I think it's Hugh Center that does the oversight hearings for them too, and then I guess the next hearing. But we, we keep getting that, that until there's a commitment of funds, that there is no, there are no funds available for them to modify the plan. And that's always the response that I get from them. Maybe Alan could give you more of an update on his interactions.
This is a chicken and egg thing?
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and that's why we're here. We're five months into the fiscal year. We know what happened in July. We believe in July, when, when Medicaid and MIP ran out of money. We were in a big crisis, right? We're five months into the fiscal year. The appropriations for Medicaid has been exhausted. And so, I don't know what that translates to the hospital, but that's, that's some serious issues that, that must be talked about now with you. And I know you say you are doing reconciliations, but those are serious discussions that need to be had. Have you already had these discussions with them about this fiscal year?
No, not on this fiscal year. And that's, you know, the very, I guess, I'm just hearing this for the first time from you, that the appropriations are exhausted. And that's very disconcerting, because this, this really plunged us, one of the major prices plunged us into a crisis. And we have not been advised that funds are either exhausted or unavailable to reimburse us. That would be a real problem for us. And so I think that's something that we need to really discuss now, if, if that, if that's an issue. But we have not heard from that. Alan, have you, in your discussions with that?
I would like to point two pages in the presentation. If you can go to page ten, please. This is correspondence that went to the legislature last July relative to what funding we had put in the budget for GMH. And at the bottom, you'll see that we had put thirty-eight million dollars in for Medicaid, MIP, and reimbursement from government agencies. Those funds were not in the appropriations. Joe mentioned that, you know, they have limitations. There's only so many million dollars that they put in the budget. And that's what we said we needed in order to get reimbursed our costs. Now that we have to change the state plan and answer to, Vice Speaker, we have not proposed, but certainly, it's one of the initiatives that we have to do. I'd also like to have you look at page seventeen, which deals with the pharmaceutical fund. As you know, you have appropriated money in your, your budget bill, nine point three million dollars. But seventy-five percent of that is, I'll use the word siphoned off, to go to Medicaid to become a local match for the federal match. And so I did a brief calculation down below to say, here's theoretically what happens. I have six point nine million dollars going to Medicaid. I'm supposed to get that fifty-five, Medicaid takes those funds and asks for our federal match of eight point five, coming to fifteen point five million. I have no way of knowing, when I get a remittance from public health, what fund is it coming from? Is it coming from the Medicaid fund? Is it coming from the pharmaceutical fund? I don't know that. Also, according to the budget bill, I'm supposed to have a settlement quarterly. Whatever funds aren't paid from the pharmaceutical funds are supposed to come to GMH. I haven't received that settlement yet. So we have multiple problems of inadequate reimbursement from the health plans, inadequate budgeting, funding for Medicaid and MIP, and then the settlement of dollars comes. But, you know, certainly, we don't have-
So, so you will see out of this, for all intents and purposes, out of the nine point three that, that you allocate, I mean, for all intents and purposes, only two point three comes to, comes to, comes to GMH in realization and actual cash. And, which, again, you know, compounds part of the problem, but, you know, we-
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll have that discussion. Okay, senators, sorry, senators.
Thank you, Senator Aragon. I really appreciate this presentation that you've provided. It really gives a lot of working numbers to, to be able to draw some extrapolations from. I'm, I want to start by first saying I'm really concerned about the new hospital opening. I've said that so many times, it kind of, it feels like I'm, you know, I'm going a little overboard. But here's, here's, here's what, what it comes down to. In September, the new hospital opens. Our budget will be passed in October. So if we don't understand what the fiscal impacts are of the new hospital before we pass the budget, it's not going to be included in the budget. And then let's say the full fiscal impact is felt in December, January, or this time next year, and it wasn't budgeted for at the beginning of the fiscal year, after hay pay raises and all these other things, we're going to be looking at an incredibly scary situation for the hospital. And so that's why I keep asking, and, and while we're going to the hearing, I've done some extrapolating on my own based on what was provided. And I, I really appreciate these kind of things, and I think that we can use this as a starting point. And just to clarify, before actually getting to some of the numbers and how scary it looks like for me, Alan, if you can help me clarify, on page seven, the, out of all these columns here, I'm going to make an assumption that the, one, two, three, the fourth column and the sixth column are pretty much the insurance columns. Those are the ones that are paid by insurance, with insurance companies. Okay. Now, when I did a calculation, there are about thirty-four million on the total charges for those three months. That comes out to about eighty percent of our, of our total charges that come from insurance company charges.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, it's about seventy-nine percent.
That's eighty percent.
Yeah. Now, and so I go back to page six here and look at gross patient revenues. And so I'm, I'm going to assume that the gross patient revenues, they don't, they don't match to that charges, but I guess there's just a difference in money coming in and charges going out. But I'm just going to assume then that of that thirty-six million in gross patient revenues, that's also eighty percent coming from insurance companies.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, now, you guys mentioned earlier in the hearing that you think the impact might be thirty percent.
Well, you know, if you, if you, if, if we assumed, and Joe and I have talked about it, if I assume that all of column six will go away for commercial, now, but, but, you know, that's not only local insurers, that could be Gov. Guam Agency Care, Department of Corrections, it could be people off island covered by Aetna, United Healthcare, or whomever it is. So it's really hard.
Yeah, no, I understand. But allow me to walk through both scenarios here.
Yeah, but if I look at that and I multiply it by four, then I have thirty-eight million dollars. If everything would go away, I'd have thirty-eight million. When I talked to Gemma and the, and the nursing managers and all the managers about the fiscal 2015 budget, I said, we have to be flexible as far as looking at staffing ratios based on patient days. Now, if that means a low census day, that our census is going from thirty down to twenty, then we have to look at ways that we adjust our staffing based on actual occupancy, not just because I have, I have a full-time employee or whatever. So that's part of what we're trying to do with the managers and with nursing in order to manage the, the labor cost. But certainly, like you say, if I lose thirty-five hundred bed days, and who knows about Medicare, but let's say thirty-five hundred times four is fourteen thousand days out of, out of fifty thousand. That's, that's a significant cost. We are eighty percent inpatient services. And for us to lose twenty-five, thirty percent of our business, will, will have a major effect, especially because it's high paying-
That's right.
Better paying, not high paying, better paying, better reimbursement than what we get from Medicare, Medicaid, and MIP.
Yeah. So let me, let me kind of walk you guys through what I've, what I've, what I've done, and also what I've heard. Now, based on that thirty percent, and I, and I factored it into these existing numbers here on page six. Now, these are for the three months ending twelve, thirty-one, twenty thirteen, which means you take that, you multiply it by four to get the full calendar year, full fiscal year. That at thirty percent will come up to a ninety-eight million dollar shortfall, assuming all of these numbers remain consistent at thirty percent.
Say that again.
A ninety-eight million dollar. Right now, we're at a shortfall of seven million for the quarter. So about thirty million for the year, thirty million for the year.
Yes.
If we lose just thirty percent of that, of that thirty-six million inpatient revenue, the end, end result for the full, full year comes up to a ninety-eight million dollar shortfall, as opposed to-
I think that's correct. Let's, let me try and clarify that.
Sure, I'm, I'm just showing you what, this is very rough, okay? But I'm just showing you how scary this is for me.
I don't think we can go from a thirty million to a ninety-eight million dollar loss. I think that's a little, that's a little too far. But let's say that, now, once again, this eight million dollar loss on page six is before the subsidies that we've received. We have received, you know, Gov. Guam Compact Impact, we have received other funds too. But this is our loss from operations. This is where Joe and Dr. Lozama and I are working to say, we have to manage this to a break even. We can't continue to hemorrhage two and a half million dollars a month, which is what we're doing. So let's say I have eight million multiplied by four, it's thirty-two million. If I lose thirty million dollars of charges, even if I, if all of my expenses were equal to thirty million, that would only be sixty-two million, not, not ninety-eight million.
I'm just assuming because, and, don't get me wrong, I agree with you. The numbers, the numbers do need to be worked properly. I'm just assuming that, for example, the contractual adjustments here on page six, that's for the three months of the full fiscal year, which means that that's also thirty-six million dollars in contractual adjustments? I'm sorry, forty-eight million?
This is, this includes Medicare, Medicaid, and MIP. So, you know, when I lose thirty million dollars of what's insurance billings, it might translate to twenty-four million dollars of cash, right, at eighty percent received versus a hundred percent. Now, if I lose twenty-four million, it doesn't mean I'm going to lose twenty-four million, because if I lose one, twenty-five percent of my business, I'm not going to keep my staffing and services here when it's at here.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I wanted to talk about, too.
So the twenty-five billion will have to be adjusted down to whatever that lost, net cost is from the loss of that-
And, and if I can, I just really want to make a point. This is not just, Senator, a, a management of the loss issue too. As, as Alan will tell you, it is, it is, it is a reimbursement level, or lack thereof, of adequate reimbursement, and it is a lack of revenue. So it's a clearly combination of, of, of a bunch of those items. To say that we're just going to achieve seven point eight million dollars of the loss from cutting it out, or, or eliminating losses, is not, is not realistic. And, and, and so, and especially when you look at how we're not even reimbursed at cost level for, you know, for, for our costs from, from the various programs. So eighty percent, yeah, is, is probably the best from the, from the insurance. But when you look at the tremendous amount, we do not recuperate from the self-pays for a lot of different reasons. I mean, all of that, coupled with the fact that we're only getting forty-five percent reimbursement on a dollar thereabout from the three M's. I mean, and our costs are here, and our reimbursement are here, that, that, that becomes the, the major issue. And that's the discussion that, that we need to put on the table going back, forward.
No, I understand. What, what I'm saying is, assuming all things remain consistent. You know, I know you guys are doing, you're, you're doing your best to improve the reimbursements and to get that money. And, and I'm going to encourage that as much as possible. The danger is, as you guys work on increasing those reimbursements and that cash, that, that cash position begins to improve, if all of a sudden, we're, we're having so much money dumped out the back door because this new hospital opens up. And if the conversation's going to be, we're going to be reducing staffing levels or services in order to compensate for that, that means people here are going to be losing their jobs. You know, and so the sooner we can understand what that, what that potential impact may be, not only do we, not only that help us in the budget, because, you know, when we're talking about the budget, we need to, we need to talk about this, and whether or not we need to further increase the subsidy to GMH to keep it operating. Or, and/or, we need to make sure it's very transparent to the employees, so that they understand that the hospital may very well be a going concern come February of next year. And unless the government does furloughs or payless paydays, or sells assets, you know, you may be out of a job. And those are the kind of fiscal realities that I'm, I, I, when I sit here and I look forward over the next twelve months, I really feel like it's important for us to firmly understand that. Because otherwise, if we're saying, if we're only looking at the next thirty days, the next sixty days, I'm not talking about you, but I'm talking about us, you know, if we're only looking at the next fiscal year and how are we going to fund things without realizing what the true shortfall may be, you know, I don't want us to pass a budget that doesn't factor in the new hospital impact. And then for us to come back in December, January, and we don't know where the money's going to come from, and everybody at GMH is going to be scrambling.
And Senator, if, I hear what you're saying, and I understand that, and, and we all have shared that concern. But part of this issue is you, you, it's, it's, it's almost impossible to predict whether something's going to be a temporary loss, a permanent loss, and, and would it be irresponsible to say, okay, we're going to ask, we're going to guesstimate a twenty-five to thirty percent. So like you said, we're going to reduce services or reduce staff. And then all of a sudden, we, we incur either, either, it dips, and then the curve comes back up. So, so it is a very, a very complex discussion. And I, and I understand it's not something that, that you can accurately, I think, predict. I think the key is flexibility. The key for us, you're hearing us, is our plans are to be flexible. Our plans, plans are to put a system in place that, that, that allows for adjustments based on actual service variables such as service demand. And I know that brings in a complicated set of factors. So for example, if I staff a unit that, that has a capacity for thirty, with, with nurses and other staff, and we only have twelve or, or eleven patients in there, of course, we can't maintain a staffing level of, that, that we would have for thirty patients. So therefore, we need to adjust that in whatever way. Well, okay, at this time, then we're going to go to a three-day work week, or, you know, something like that. And I understand what you're saying. But that's what, that's the realities that I understand you're concerned with.
Very much so.
And we're concerned with too. And those are, that's the, the kind of nim, you know, I hate to say being nimble, but, you know, being nimble, Jack, be quick. But the flexibility that I think that you, that we all need to consider to build into- But the flexibility that I think that you, that we all need to consider to build into the approach next year, because you can't just write something in stone and say, "Here it is, we're going to stick with it." Because if you experience a dip, you have to adjust. If we experience an increase, we have to adjust.
No, I very much agree with you, um, and I, and I, and I respect the fact that management is going to be taking that approach. As policymakers, when we pass the budget, we don't pass very flexible budgets. You know, and so when, uh, if we come to the situation where come December, come January, you guys are going to be saying, "Oh, we might go into a three-day work week." One of the first responses are going to be, go to the legislature and ask for an appropriation to save the work week. You know, and then what we're, we're going to be looking at, uh, an inflexible budget come January, February, because it was fully committed in October and the full impact wasn't, wasn't, wasn't factored in. And so, it, we need to understand that going into the budget.
And what we did last year, if you remember the, the presentations that we did, was that we did put in staffing ratios based on patient days. We did discuss that. I've been going to be presenting that to Gemma for the nursing staff, because that's a major commitment. But as Joe said, if we go from thirty to twelve days, we can't allow the staffing. And Gemma's concern is to find, make sure that if somebody's displaced in one department, that they're clinically trained in the other department, because people just can't, a nurse is not a nurse is not a nurse. And, and they have, there's a lot of training, I believe, it's like three or four months usually sometimes to get them trained in to provide care in a specific department. But I do want to go also back to another document that I had, um, and this ties into, we, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean that we're staffing it. If you look at, um, I had a, on page twenty-seven, for example, we were talking earlier in the HAY study about, um, did I, did I estimate the cost for vacancies? Well, these are a hundred and seventy-five physicians that are vacant. Just because they're in the budget doesn't mean that I, as certifying officer, or Joe is approving them. We're being very judicious to make sure that there is a need for that staff person and that, and we are, we're just not saying, just because it's budgeted, it's there. If it's true, if we're incurring overtime when I couldn't save overtime, that's a whole different story. But, um, once again, same thing going into two thousand fifteen. What is the potential cost? What, what is that staffing? And, and so we're looking at whether it's fifty thousand, forty-five thousand, forty thousand a day, whatever that number is, we're going to be looking at staffing and be able to present that in our budget.
And I know, probably Senator, maybe we can talk next time about, you know, staffing issue, we could probably spend another couple hours on easily. Uh, but, but, you know, the other factors to consider is, as Gemma will tell you, critical care nurses, ER nurses, OR nurses, don't just come out of school trained to be critical care nurses, ER nurses, and OR nurses. It takes a good six months to train, you know, a nurse basically doubled up with additional staff. And, and these are all factored in, in terms of, so this is a complex kind of discussion that we have. That number that you also saw there, seventy-eight of those vacancies relate to coverage for different types of entitlements. That, that folks that are on different types of leaves, absences, military, family leave, sick, you know, you know, vacations, whatever. And, and so all of these, you know, this discussion about how we staff, and, and as Alan said, just because you see it here, doesn't mean that, that it, 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 just because it's funded, it, it's going to get, it gets filled. Uh, you know, we're being very, as you, as I said, responsible and, and judicious with, prudent with the use of our limited financial resources. And, you know, that's part of what we do, is look at our needs and say, "Do we really need this?" You know, can, can we, can we be more efficient? As, as the staff can tell you, yes, we're running, we're running lean, and we will continue to run.
This is a very important topic as well. We can continue it at a later time. Senator, we can wrap. I know Senator Uggan has another.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Chairman. Just a quick question, if you can revert back to, uh, page thirteen. I know that the hospital deals with multiple factors or most, multiple areas in terms of trying to generate revenues. And obviously pursuing, uh, funds that should be, that are out there, that should otherwise be allocated directly to GMH is, is another concern. Well, this particular, the urgent care funding, I know, noticing your slide, your original estimate is a hundred and fifty thousand, and we know that the actuals have dropped significantly from that original anticipation. But in July, in October, you received a sixty-five thousand dollar check for just a month of July. And then you received an additional payment in January of fifty-seven thousand, so just extrapolating at sixty thousand dollars a month, approximately sixty thousand dollars a month, really to date, you should have about four hundred and fifty thousand just for urgent care consideration. So I wanted to, to just regurgitate what you have in this particular report in terms of what has been received and, and conceivably what may not have been received. I also noticed that you have asked, GMH has asked DOA for an accounting of what funds would otherwise, uh, should otherwise be remitted over to GMH for your operations. So I guess my follow-on question is, because the legislation strictly allocates those resources for urgent care operations, are these funds now being set aside in a trust fund or in a separate account until such time that the urgent care facility is open? So right now you have a hundred and twenty-three thousand plus a hundred and ninety-five, which you're about ready to pick up, hopefully right after this particular public hearing.
I'll stop, I'll stop in the way. Fred Ben answers your question.
But that would amount to about three hundred and eighteen thousand. So are the funds being set aside or have they been expended for some semi-urgent care expense?
Um, no, the, the funds are put in, into savings. You know, the funds are, are allocated to urgent care and following that dictators will not deviate from that. They are for, for urgent care only. But I do want to come back, I had heard speculation that there were eight hundred thousand dollars collected so far from the game. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. But let's say that's four hundred and eighty thousand we've received, will have received three hundred and twenty thousand. Coming back to the, my original comment, first of all, it's in savings, which we, we want to do. But second of all, we still have the forty percent that has not been received. And that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you, the senators, have the capacity to release that. And that three hundred and twenty thousand dollars would go a long way, whether I needed three hundred thousand for IT equipment or three hundred thousand dollars to pay off of, of, uh, an important vendor or to buy capital, uh, services. You know, so I really encourage you to, uh, look at a way to automatically release that remaining forty percent from those gaming funds. Understand there's, without going into what happens later this month relative to the hearings, et cetera. But for now, those funds were received and they are due GMH per the original bill, and we'd like to really have those because that would be a real booster cash flow.
I think Alan, in that case, I'm, I'm going to yield to the chairman in terms of any subsequent legislation addressing the balance of the forty percent. I was just, I'm looking at, okay, what has been received, what could conceivably have been received? Because just extrapolating, I mentioned a four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you should have in the bank today, if in fact the fact, the numbers draw out on a monthly basis. So you're absolutely right, that extrapolation leads to about a seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars that conceivably should have been collected as tax revenues from those particular activities under that new law. So I mean, just looking at that, you can, you can, uh, perhaps go out and pursue an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to the hundred and ninety-five that you're about ready to pick up. Because certainly, once that urgent, urgent care facility is stood up, you're going to need the equipment, you're going to need the resources, you're going to need to cover down on all your expenses. And having those funds readily available is certainly going to help in that entire process. I just want to close with this one comment. I know that, uh, Bell, Dr. Bell, uh, mentioned a little earlier about the possibility of an open-heart, uh, program. I think that's excellent for the community, and I'm going to make that statement at the forefront. But recognizing that a new hospital facility is about ready to be open, I believe with regards to such a program that would require an extensive investment financially and commitment in terms of supplies, in terms of facilities, in terms of, of physicians and professionals, that perhaps moving in that direction, there should be a, a good amount of coordination with the new hospital facility if in fact they're going to already provide that, that particular service. Because it could be a partnership in the making in terms of continuing to pursue that program, provide that service out of GMH, but in partnership with the new hospital, once that hospital opens, because they may have all the facilities readily available and whatnot. So I just wanted to close with that statement, because I would hate to see us, uh, move in that direction, invest all the, all those additional resources, and then find out on the road that our next-door neighbor, by the way, is providing the very same services at, at perhaps a little lesser price of cost to the patients out there in the community.
And Senator, just let me say that I have met with Margaret, and we are working together on several initiatives and, and sharing things. So we've been talking about a lot of things. So we are, uh, you know, for example, I have some proposals into them, they, they are developing some proposals to put into us. So we are really working, uh, working together and moving along, and, and we have a good dialogue. But, uh, that's exactly what we're looking to do, is to coordinate services. So as I said before, we don't duplicate and, and compete.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker has a, has a follow-up. Yes?
Senator, please. Um, I just want to comment about urgent care. And, and you're very, it's very accurate that we, whatever those funds are. And, you know, once again, as I shared, I received a call that funds through November have been paid to us now or made available. So we still have a couple of months that are still outstanding to us, so that'll make up the difference. But I do want to mention something that's very important for the urgent care. One, depending on the location, uh, will have a major bearing on the capital cost. And, and even if we say it's going to start X days in the future, we still have to recruit providers. And from talking to, uh, personnel, Dr. Lozama, Dr. Cabrera, we know how difficult it is to recruit providers to Guam. And yet, in our budget, we included two providers to provide that care to ensure that we have the coverage in urgent care. So the sooner we know what funds we can count on goes a long ways towards, uh, moving forward with the recruitment efforts to make sure we have the right professionals in urgent care setting.
Okay, great, thank you. Before Vice Speaker, you know, in, in the capital improvement, um, expenses that's needed for the urgent care, there's two individuals here that are going to be very, um, useful and influential. Those are the two pink ladies, um, you know, that we have here. They've been very helpful in other projects in the hospital, so I'm encouraging you to reach out to them because they're, they're very, they're very helpful, and I'm sure, I'm sure they can be a big asset in development of the urgent care.
And I'm sure they'll tell you that their annual ball is coming up in March.
That's what we know. We'll be there, definitely.
Encourage you to attend also. Thank you.
Definitely, got it. Thank you, Vice Speaker.
If I can take us back to the HAY study. Um, you said that, um, you need about five point five. Wouldn't, five point eight with the retirement? In, in calculating that amount, did you calculate that at forty hours a week for the employees, eighty hours per pay period?
No, actually, what I did, Vice Speaker, was this. I took actual employee hours from October through January twenty-fifth pay. Well, that was paid last Friday, so I have their actual hours and their actual wages for four months, uh, ten payroll periods. And then I extrapolated that for, uh, a full year. So I, I anticipated what the total cost would be, and then I took information from personnel to say, here's a, if somebody's going up ten percent, and because they burned regular time, overtime, certification pay, weekend work, all of that, then I said their, their pay was forty thousand dollars for the year, and it goes up ten percent. Then I estimated the cost of pay was, uh, four thousand dollars plus thirty percent, so it's actually fifty-five thousand two hundred for that example. So it's, it's based on actual hours.
Excellent, because I was just wondering, because it would seem to me that if their per hour went up and they were, they're, I know that they, almost all of them do overtime.
Right, so I took that all into account. So I actually have a full accounting of all hours. And I projected, when I looked at year-to-date for four months, I assumed that they would do the same activity of overtime, certification, weekends, on-call during the balance of the year to come up with total hours. So if somebody's going to work twenty-five hundred hours from all different sources, I said, "Here's my total salary and here's what it's going to cost in your head." So I took that into account.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. I have two more things. One is, we'll talk about the loan proceeds and then the ER coverage, okay? We, we saw some, um, vendors here, um, earlier, I think that they had to leave. But, um, and I heard earlier that part of the loan proceeds, we know what is happening, you've set it up where it's a line of credit, so you're not using it right away. But, you know, going back to what the intent was, and, you know, when we, um, expanded the borrowing authority, the governor, um, committing to the Compact Impact money was to pay off our vendors completely. I mean, we know we can't pay them off completely, but to pay, that, that money is to be exhausted to pay off the vendors as soon as possible. And so I know that you said that you, you guys are coming up with the list of, um, how it's going to be paid. I, I just wanted, we've been getting calls as, as well from our local vendors. I mean, you know, they hear that, um, these other vendors who are critical as well, um, are wanting to get paid. They're getting paid because they're garnishing our money or they stopped providing services. We can't forget though, these guys here, that despite not being paid, you know, are, um, still providing service. So, um, how are you doing, are you doing it through aging? Are you doing it through, um...
Yeah, maybe, even though we set the, um, the funds up as a line of credit, we just draw it down as we need it. So for example, uh, you know, let me, let me just say that, I'm getting the same calls that you are, Senator, that I'm sure all of you are, that the governor's office is getting. And, and let me just say that the majority, most of this money is all going for local vendors. I mean, the only two things that we did pay, uh, first, because out of necessity, was the, was the first loan to avoid the six million dollar balloon payment that was coming up. And of course, Perry point that, um, uh, in fact, we had to do that, we had to do that over several days because there's a two million dollar limit of transfer, EFT transfer limit at the Bank of Guam. So we, we, we set that up over several days. After that, Alan and I are working on a list of payables. We're doing it by amount owed vendor, amount owed to the vendor and criticality of the vendor, and basically going from there, you know, age, you know, of how much we owe. And as I said, we, we, we don't have enough to cover, to pay off, to zero out everyone total. And I know everyone, but we're looking to, to spread that money out. That money is all going for a vendor payable. So I want to be clear, I mentioned earlier, it's not going anywhere else except to pay off vendors. And, and most of it is all going for local vendors. But it's, it take, it's take, we need a little bit of time to go through each line item of each vendor and, and how much receivables, the age of receivables, how much we owe, and determine based on what we have to spread around this ten point seven million. How can we allocate that as best as possible, based on the, the level of debt, the criticality of the vendor? And I've been meeting with vendors and explaining this to them all along too. So we're asking our vendors to be patient just a little bit longer. They've been great. They've worked with us all along, our doctors the same way. And, um, you know, by the end of the week, I, I expect to have at least a, a draft, a proposed list of, of payments to vendors. And then we need time to start working on it. Because, uh, you know, these checks will come like this, by the time they cut them. And, and so we'll, once we have a list, then we'll start sending them out in batches. And so we're just asking our vendors to be patient a little bit longer. It's on the way, um, but, but I've been in the same, the same communication with them. But to be clear, it is all going to pay vendors, and most of it is all going for local vendors.
And let me just add, if you look at page five of the presentation, I met last Friday with our directors and buyers from Materials Management, our director and buyer for pharmacy, and our, uh, interim director of operations. And we came up, page five, we came up with a list of payments that had to be made. Joe mentioned earlier, and it's on page four, that we have ten point seven million dollars available. Based on what we said, what we have, just what we want to pay, we have eleven point eight million dollars. We only have ten point seven, so we're already short one point one million. But as Joe mentioned, we are going to be, uh, looking to these vendors to talk to them and say, "We want to get more current." We might not be able, some we might want to pay a hundred percent off right away. Some we might say, "Well, we're going to take you to thirty days, we're not going to pay January invoices." But it'll be on a case-by-case, vendor-by-vendor basis. But once again, even right now, we're at twelve million of need with only ten point seven. And that's my, that's our preliminary list, and Joe and I are meeting to talk about it. Because he might say, "Alan, you can't pay this vendor fifty thousand, you need to pay them eighty thousand," or vice versa. And that's the, the push and pull that we're going to have. And also, when we talk to Materials Management, Pharmacy, and Operations, to say, "Who are the vendors that we, that, that are, need to be paid, but also are providing excellent service and excellent prices to GMH?" Those are things, the criteria that we're looking at.
These are the times that if I smoked, I'd need a cigarette, right? Yeah.
So, and so you're, 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 this plan you have would be transparent, be open for them to see, because that's, that's the concern. So I'll take you on that.
This plan will be transparent, open, I'll make it public. Um, I'm sure the, uh, the media will be interested in it. You'll probably see it published in one of the media papers, I'm sure, shortly thereafter. But once we finalize the list, then we'll make it available. But, you know, even finalizing a list doesn't mean that we've actually paid it. It's going to take time to pay this, so be, I'm not, you know, it's going to take us time to release a list like that. Or, or what I might do is decide to just wait till we pay everything. and then make the list available. Here's what we paid, you know, to everybody. So I think that would, yes, but absolutely, it's gonna be absolutely transparent and, and open and available for everybody to see.
Okay, thank you.
And let me just clarify one more thing. If you look at the far right column, I have nineteen million dollars of payables. Taking out the revenue, new, revenue and tax four million, I still have fifteen million dollars, of which ten point seven I have to pay. This includes, the nineteen million dollars includes receipts from January, and we don't pay the same month for receipts. So, you know, but once again, to be made whole, you know, theoretically, I need another four million dollars to, to make payments. And every month, we're incurring more purchases and incurring more payables. So it's a give and take. But once again, we're, we're, we have a four million dollar shortfall right now, three and a half million dollars. And, and that's what, you know, I mean, if there'd be a way to pay it, then we wouldn't have to say, well, this vendor's getting only seventy percent versus somebody else getting a hundred percent. That would be very helpful to us.
Okay, thank you. You know, we, we did receive calls as well from patients in the ER room about long, longer than usual waits, right? And so, and so when we, you know, took a look at it, we discovered, um, that there's only probably one ER doctor that is handling, that, that has coverage there. Is that a, is that an accurate statement?
No, that's, that's inaccurate. We, we, um, there is always typically two doctors, sometimes three.
So never a time?
It might have, it might have been an issue, uh, where we, we recently did have one doctor that had to, that had to leave on an emergency, who might have been scheduled for coverage, and, you know, who, we, we might have been unable to fill that one shift. But that is not a typical occurrence. Um, you know, as Dr. Lozama couldn't come up and tell you that, uh, we, we always schedule at least two and three, uh, in the ER, uh, for that. So that is not a typical situation. If it happened, it was a blip on the screen, and, and it's not a typical occurrence.
If we can have Dr. Lozama, if we can. Morning, Lieutenant. Morning. Still morning.
Almost good afternoon, Senators. Um, I understand from yesterday's schedule and looking at the scan in the emergency room that we do have some shortage in coverage. Um, and it's, um, contrary to what Mr. Berger said, there are actually shifts that are only single-covered.
Yeah, and so that's why I want to know, because we got patients who've come to us, and, um, also staff members that who, who, you know, when, when we verified that there is a shortage, and that, uh, to me, it's, I think it's unacceptable to have an ER with one, with one physician. And I don't know, you know, if that's, if that's standard, if that's, um, but surely, I think that's something that must be addressed.
If it is short, it's not by design, okay? It's not by intent, okay? We recently, in fact, we recently increased the ER doctors, uh, because, uh, salaries, because of, um, of, we were, we were gonna lose some. Uh, so we, 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 we are, um, I know we're, we're still recruiting. We, we, in fact, we're short in several other services that we still are recruiting. But it's not by design. And, and so, uh, you know, Dr. Murphy, who's our ER physician, is responsible to make sure that we try to cover. There are times when it's, according to Dr. Murphy, when he cannot cover with, with two physicians. And, and so what, you know, we try to do is, um, in, in any way possible, try to cover it. But we, it's not by design. It's not that we've cut doctors or, or, or shorted doctors or not recruiting. It's just that we either don't have enough to cover the shifts, or, or we recently had a doctor that had to go back to the mainland on an emergency, which compounded the situation.
Sure, you know, and, and, and I think-
So it's not because we're not funding them. It's not because we're not, you know, we're cutting them. It's not, it's not by design. These are strictly shortage issues.
I can accept that. I can accept that. But what is being done now? Is there, is there coverage? Is there a single?
No, I mean, I mean, the whole thing, the, the whole coverage for the hospital service center i- is, is in crisis, okay? I mean, we're, we're having trouble right now with filling the hospitalist program for the internal medicine department. Uh, you see on my, um, uh, list of, um, uh, hospitalists, um, request for seven internal internists. Right now, we have three in-house. And so we're, I'm struggling to try to get more internists to cover the hospital. And we're tapping into the community, uh, physicians to see what they can do to help out with, with the shortage. It is in crisis. I mean, I, I mean, you know, I'm doing part, part of that responsibility. Dr. Cabrera has, has done his share. We're basically, you know, uh, struggling to fill many the, uh, the internal medicine department. Now, the ER, as I look at the schedule, is, is not covered for a week, you know, uh, that it was given yesterday to me. And I, I was surprised that this was the case. And, you know, I did talk to Ms., Dr. Murphy about why this was not communicated to me. But, uh, you know, he said that it was, uh, taking, it wa- it, it will be taken care of. Now, whether that, whether that has to do with the fact that, uh, there's been an increase in, in pay and willing to work for more, for single coverage, and we're still gonna get the safety versus, you know, there really is a, um, you know, a real need, and, and we're working under, uh, not the ideal situation. So, um...
So I think I hear two different things. So, so what, are we, that's a schedule for this past week or this coming week?
This coming week.
So, so are we?
But, but we're, we're recruiting. I mean, I've been on the phone, I mean, I get to the office around six-thirty every morning and communicating with people that, recruiting. I mean, I, again, unfortunately, the one person that was contracted to cover the service, I guess, uh, I, I'm not aware of it until yesterday, but Mr. Berger left, right? The, uh, one of the ER doctors had le- left on an emergency.
I just want to comment, you know, that Joe has been in, you know, communications with Dr. Murphy as clinical department head for the emergency room. And Dr. Murphy's been very ardent to make sure that the emergency doctors are adequately paid. He presented something to the HR Subcommittee last month, and also to the board, and the board did approve a twenty percent increase in compensation for the emergency room doctors, which Dr. Murphy thought would be helpful to recruit new doctors. Uh, now, how, how Dr. Lozama, Dr. Murphy are, are filling these slots, um, you know, that's, that's a recruitment issue and, and retention also. But, but certainly, the board and, uh, HR Subcommittee and Administration has made dollars available to make sure we have the coverage that we need in the emergency department.
Okay. Doc, are you the, what is your, your position now? You're the medical director, right?
I'm still the associate medical director.
Okay, so I, I just, I, I don't know why, if, if Dr. Lozama's not part, it, or doesn't know what has happened, why is that? Is there a breakdown in communication between the ER and the medical director?
I'm not really sure, because the, uh, Dr. Lozama should be communicating with all department heads on a regular basis. He's, he's the medical director. And they report to him in the scheme of things. So, uh, not to me. And, uh, but I understood, and I understood that there was one physician who was, had to go to the mainland. I don't know why, uh, Dr. Lozama wasn't communicating with Dr. Lozama. But obviously, there is a, there was a breakdown in communication, and an improvement needs to occur.
That's right. So, so, okay, so Dr. Lozama is the, the medical director, and, and, and we know that. Is he giving the, the medical director, given the support in terms of, you know, we need, if, if he needs doctors, um, and I, I just, you're just noticing it now, where there was an increase in pay for, for ER doctors. Is he giving that support to ensure that he's able to keep doctors or to recruit the doctors?
Well, we just, we just increased their salaries. So I mean, I, I, we, 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 we're also, Alan, I, I asked Alan to reallocate the budget to allow seven, uh, hospitalists to recruit for it. We need to recruit. And, and Dr. Lozama and I have been talking about this. There is, there is a shortage in, in hospitalists. And so it's not because we're not recruiting and, and, or because we're not funding it. Um, there is, there is a recruitment problem. Um, we recently, we've got several, uh, recruitments in the pipeline. Maybe Dr. Lozama can tell the, the Senator, we've got an emergency room physician that we're, that's a J-one waiver, that's a, a visa issued that we're recruiting now. Um, and we just, um, um, you know, so they're, we're, we're recruiting on an ongoing basis. So we're certainly, we support, uh, the medical staff. It's not that, that we're new, we, uh, you know, certainly where possible. So, um, it's not that we're not, it's not that there's a lack of funds, or, or we're saying, no, you can't do this. Um, you know, so if there were, if there were four doctors, hospitalists today that we, you have in your pocket, uh, we, we will hire them. That need to get licensed, that need to get credentialed, that need to get, you know, so it's not a, a very quick thing to find physicians. And as Dr. Lozama can tell you, we've, we're recruiting on an ongoing basis. So we, we're, we're recruiting se- several specialists on an ongoing basis. So that is, that is an issue.
I'd like to ask you, Senators, again, to look at page twenty-seven, which is a list of vacancies. Yes, we have employed physicians, but we also, these are the vacancies. And you will see that at the top of the right column, we have hospitalist, internal medicine. But if you go further down, two-thirds of the way, we have physician, emergency room, internal medicine, OB, OR, pediatrics. Those are all in the budget for fiscal two thousand fourteen. Now, they're still vacant. Why they haven't been recruited, I don't know. But they're in the budget, and we did have funds provided for those. So, uh, and I understand the, the request for additional hospitalists to change hours, and Dr. Cabrera presented a, a plan to correct that. But we do have the funds. Now, if I, if I don't have three OB GYNs, then maybe I take three OB GYNs and become three internists to, to become a hospitalist. But I do have, I can, I'll use the word, move the positions in order to accomplish what we need, to meet the needs of the community.
I need, I need to add to that, though, because, you know, I think I'm being put on the, on the spot here. Uh, I mean, a- as, as in everything, service-wise, okay? I mean, you know, the, the, Alan basically looks at revenue generated by every service. So to say that, that we have seven positions in internal medicine, and to come back to me and tell me that, you know, they're not making revenue, okay? We're not gonna move forward with that seven positions. And one of the things that, that becomes a problem, whenever we, you know, we look at, uh, staffing the hospital, whether it's providing, you know, Joe mentioned earlier about revenue generating services, you know, everything applies. I mean, the, the TFA, you know, underfunding, the MIP underpayment, you know, all those things apply to the services we have for the hospital, whether it's for the heart project or recruiting for doctors. So we're never going to be able to recruit appropriately for doctors. This is not about me not getting the doctors, or, you know, the hospital not, uh, you know, um, being able to, uh, to support it financially. It's just the, the reality of the situation is that for every service, and hospitalist is a service, just like the heart project is a service. So if it's not making money, when you ha- when you need seven internists, somebody's gonna come to, to me and say, it's not making money. We gotta cut, cut, you know, get, uh, cut back on the physicians. And that's how these things have been looked at. So unfortunately, you know, we as a community decide how to support a hospital that's not making money for the services it needs to provide. And, and I, I've always said that, you know, it, uh, it, it's a community.
Yeah, and, and Doc, I agree, because I, that's what I mentioned earlier. Even though we, we say we need to look at other ways we can have revenue generating, but we gotta have that balance. But because, you know, we're not a for-profit, you know? And so we need, um, to have that balance. And so that's what we're asking here now, is whether the, the physicians, the medical side, is gonna, because we're so tight, you know, um, you know, we're so concentrated on the finances, that, that we want to make sure we don't, um, we don't jeopardize the, the patient care.
And some of these, this is, you know, the, the Dr. Lozama's, again, frustrations are, you know, we talk about this every day, and, you know, we're partners, and, and, and we, but, but it's, it's true. It gets back to the issue of the level of funding that the hos- that, that's supported by the community. I mean, not every service, as Dr. Lozama said, can be a revenue generating, cost neutral service. Uh, you know, a ser- a hospital may have a needed service that we're gonna lose money on. Like, we're gonna lose money because we're mandated to do it. We need this service. We're not gonna make money on it. And, and, and it's a striking balance between what we're going to support, what level we're going to support, and of course, financial stability. But, you know, getting back to how we're funded, and, you know, what we're funded for, um, you know, it gets back to, no, we're not, we're not adequately funded. And we have this conversation all the time, uh, about what level of funding that, that, that's available for what services we can sustain. We, we, we talk about this every day. And this is what we do, is manage this every day. It gets back to how, you know, a basic operation of the hospital. I mean, everybody focuses on strictly the finances, but there's so much else that goes into this comp- complex environment called the hospital, in, in, into final decisions between finance, clinical, and me as, as, as the CEO, taking everything and trying to strike a balance. You mentioned before, sometimes I referee. Yeah, sometimes I have to be a referee. But, um, a- and then ultimately making a decision on where we can redirect. But in this particular case, we do need more physicians. We are recruiting physicians, uh, and, and, you know, Dr. Lozama and, and, and Dr. Cabrera and the others that are hospitalists right now, uh, I think we were down to three maybe, or we had four. Um, you know, I met with Alan after we, you know, went too long ago, and said, we need, you know, yeah, we need to support seven. And so we'll have to take the money we allocated for a pulmonologist, and this and that, and reallocate it to do this. You know, so that's the kind of, you know, balancing decisions. You made a, a comment earlier, Senator, you're not here to micromanage us, okay? And, and, but these are all decisions that I know you guys get phone calls every day. This is what we do with managing a hospital. And, and, um, you know, so, and, and, you know, these decisions are oftentimes complex and not easy. Bottom line is, is GMH funded properly for the level of services we provide? No. And, and, and that's always the issue that we get back to here. And I'm sure we're gonna continue this conversation. So, uh, and, and I'm happy to do that.
Senator Ugin?
I think that, uh, thank you very much for, for your statements. And we understand that the challenges that GMH has been faced with. I mean, this has happened since seventeen, eighteen years ago. I mean, that one legislature around that time, timeframe, we had to go out and borrow twenty-seven million dollars to offset an obligation by GMH. So this is, this is a, an issue that has existed for quite some time. And working the balancing act, I, we understand from this perspective in terms of what you need to do. It's, the challenge I have now with regards to the ongoing discussion with Dr. Lozama is, um, I, I appreciate the effort of the board in approving the compensation, additional twenty percent for the physicians in the emergency room. My question is, because in some cases, we lose professionals because of the work environment. Not necessarily because of the compensation. Maybe the compensation is a component. But we lose it because supplies are not there, the materials are not there, uh, the assistance that really should be there to provide the initial intake of, of the patients, in this case, as, as it applies to GMH. So really, the question I have is from the professionals who actually work the emergency room, is compensation, our compensation, uh, work climate in terms of having availability of supplies and materials? Because I just heard from you, Mr. Berger, you said, at this time, funding is not an issue for the emergency room. I take it that because your comment, we were discussing the emergency room as it relates to Dr. Lozama's comments, that your con- your comment was directed towards the emergency room. So based on that aspect, what are the challenges that the physicians are having in terms of being able to stay at GMH versus exploring other options? Because, like I said a little earlier, many times, it's the environment that they work in that contribute to them looking elsewhere rather than saying, no, I'm here, I'm committed, and I'm gonna stay, stick it out as long as other things are corrected.
Um, I, I, I don't know. We, we could be here several more hours to answer your questions, Senator.
No, please, if, if I can hear from-
Sure.
Me, please, Joe. Dr. Lozama?
Well, aside from compensation, certainly there are issues with regards to the work environment. And that could be basically the fact that we don't have, you know, specialty support. We recently had a, uh, recruit from, you know, just fresh out of training, and he just resigned because he cannot work under the, um, you know, the hospital situation where he doesn't have the specialty support. So, uh, you know, certainly, in, in, in recruiting, we, we are challenged that we are in a unique hospital that doesn't have the, all the support for a better working, um, um, environment. Now, aside from that, you know, we're dealing with population of patients that are very sick. And so that, that really creates a significant burnout on physicians when patients keep coming in and out of the emergency room or in the hospital. Uh, there's no public health system for aftercare or, or, uh, discharge care. And so, you know, when, when we see this, I mean, these are just, unfortunately, situations that, you know, you, you, you know, as physicians, you wanna, you wanna see end, good end results. And you can't, you become basically non-productive in, in, in this, in this situation. So, you know, the, the challenge of, of, of the healthcare system delivery and the type of patients that we get, uh, as, as hospitalist service, whether it's in the ER or physicians in, in, uh, hired as internists or surgeons, i- is a problem. So, you know, there are also internal problems that we need to change. And I've looked at that, and that basically includes appropriately, you know, having coverage for, a defined coverage and defined roles, the scope of work for, for many of the physicians that are on staff. Now, I don't have the luxury of, you know, for instance, getting surgeons that are gonna be dedicated for GMH, okay? We're using community surgeons right now. There's already a shortage of community surgeons. But, you know, I ca- I don't have the ability to recruit four surgeons. I, I can't find any. I've, I've, I've looked around, and, and, you know, we're, we're advertising, like Alan says in the advertisement. So, so, you know, a- again, we're using community physicians that, that may have their own practices. So sometimes the delivery, you know, I mean, how does the, the community physicians choose between taking care of a patient and responding- and responding to the hospital? You know, this is a, this is a community issue, you know, and it's very complex. And certainly, certainly if we can support a, a hospital-based physician service that, that maybe can, can, can maybe change the culture and look at the hospital providing that all inpatient care, and we talked about this, extending it from just taking care of the indigenous population to including basically those that are, you know, panel to FHP or whatever, you know, and maybe that's the way to go about providing some funding for, to support this and then expanding on the specialty care.
I appreciate your, your response, and I think it really, your comments encapsulate perhaps much of the challenges that the physicians have. And let me put this in perspective, because nationally, there is a shortage of physicians and medical professionals nationally, and perhaps even internationally. But nationally, nationwide, we know that that's, there's an issue there. In this particular case, we've got to do, do the best we can. And to hear that perhaps especially specialty, due to the lack of specialty support, that someone departed the hospital. That's where my question comes in, in conjunction with compensation. Are there other factors that need to be addressed in the emergency room or at GMH to retain all of these professionals? Because the, the reality is, is in a few months, the competition is going to be opening their doors. So now it's going to be a, a challenge in terms of getting the revenue generating, revenue paying patients, perhaps albeit through insurance companies, getting them to continue to patronize GMH versus having the other hospital absorb many of these revenue paying patients. And then GMH may be left with providing public support to, to some of the perhaps patients that may not have the financial means immediately to be able to meet those obligations. So, I mean, that's where the challenge comes in. And, and Mr. Verga, you, you certainly have a challenge, a tremendous challenge. And in this case, I think that what I just heard from Dr. Lozama is there are some factors that could be tweaked. And with a little bit of tweaking and addressing some of these issues, perhaps more of these physicians would, would volunteer to come and provide community support, albeit compensation, but community support to our public hospital, and then continue to, to want to work in that particular environment. So just, I'll just close with that, because I think a lot has, has been said in regards to the shortage and regards to the challenges. And these are not situations that are going to be fixed overnight. But perhaps with the opening and establishment of an urgent care center, that may relieve some of the pressure and then allow the emergency room to concentrate on just urgent emergency situations.
Senator, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator, thank you.
First of all, I want to clarify something, but I have never negated any request for seven hospitalists. Larry's comment was incorrect. He's never, I've, I've told him that I support the recruitment of seven hospitalists and three general surgeons. I do want to mention, though, as you've mentioned, the new hospital. Larry did say to me that new hospitals offering $100,000 more a year for hospitalists. That's very hard, difficult for GMH to compete with. Many of our hospitalists have not received pay increases since 2009. So when they hear that the emergency department physicians are receiving 20% more, they're going to be saying, well, we need the same thing, whether I'm an internist, pediatrician, or whomever. The last thing I want to, to mention is that we are working through Dr. Cabrera's and Dr. Lozama's initiatives to change the internists from a 24-hour coverage to 12-hours, to have a physician be at the hospital 24-hours, which is the way the shifts are set up, going back God knows how many years to a system that burns people out because they can't be at the hospital 24-hours and provide high-quality care. The proposal has come to go to a 12-hour shift. And also to recruit adequate physicians to be able to cover two 12-hour shifts every day. So, I mean, there is discussion, there is movement, and it's not a dollars and cents. It's what's necessary for the quality of care to the people of Guam.
Thank you. Let me just close by this, because I think we're all getting, we need a little break at this time, Senator, if I may. I, I, I want to say I wholeheartedly support the medical staff and physicians. And many of them have not received raises in many years. And, and many of them have come to me. I mean, I don't think the physicians are included in the HAY study. I don't think physicians are included in, in anywhere else. Dr. Lozama and I, I, you know, the, are hospitalists, et cetera. So I, I want to lay that out, and, and I want the medical staff to hear me say this, is that, again, they, they all deserve. They have not received raises and increments. The staff last year did, they didn't. They were not included in that. So, so we need to, we need to put that on the table, not only with our hospitalists, but, 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 but across the board in how we're, we're looking at funding our physician services, period. And, and, and I, I support going to a hospitalist model across the board. I've told Dr. Lozama to, you know, I do support going to hospitalist model for surgeons, et cetera. And, and, and we're moving to, we're working on that, but that will not happen overnight. And, but I do want to just let everyone know that, that, that I think the physician compensated, how the physicians are compensated, and the fact that they have not received raises in a while needs to be put on the table, and I do support them as well. I mean, we, we started with the emergency room, but of course, all the others are going to follow now. And, and that's something we're certainly going to have to put on the table, so thanks for your time.
Thank you very much for your time as well, and thank the staff for being here. And just like I said earlier, we, we would set another hearing up, and hopefully we will, we'll get to the other points that we've requested and also follow up on some of the things that were said today, okay? Thank you very much. The committee is now in recess until 2:30 PM today. Thank you.